As a low. Ha, 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 ha. Hi, welcome to a new. Good evening, welcome to the July 14, 2021, Propo City Planning Commission meeting. We have four items on our agenda tonight to.
This meeting is being recorded.
And two discussion items. And I think Commissioner Urquaga for offering to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll go ahead and start with that and then we'll move on to a roll.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, well. We understand that Commissioner Jones will not be with us tonight. With that being the case, we'll start Daniel with you. Just to state your name and whether you have any conflicts.
Brian Henry, no conflicts.
Abe Anderson, I have no conflicts.
Laurie Urquaga, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay. That being said, moving on, item number one. Scott Bowles requests concept plan approval for a multi-for multifamily housing in a proposed I T O D zone located at 1200 West Town Center Boulevard. East Bay neighborhood. And that will turn it over to Mr. Larson. Oh, thank you. One and two together. Perfect. Item two, Scott Bowles requests a zone change from regional commercial. S C three to interim transit oriented development for approximately 21 acres located at 1200 West Town Center Boulevard. Again, Mr. Larson. That does seem way out west, right? Yeah. So we'll, uh, we'll just make a note that it's, it's probably closer to 200 West than 1200 West, but.
Okay, yes, I think it's actually should say 1200 South Town Center Boulevard. So I think it's just the west.
Or that, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think there I'll show you here in a second, but yeah, either way. So we've got again a rezone and a concept plan and just what I will do this evening with this presentation is just. I get you familiar with the property and then talk a little bit about the zoning and and the land use designation for the property. You talked through viewpoints on the concept plan. Um, elevations and floor plan and address a couple of concerns that staff has with the proposal and then offer a recommendation. So. Um, so the project proposal, as noted on the slide there, it's approx, it's an area just on the north side of the town Provo Town Center. Property 21 acres. Currently, this area of the mall is it's for many of you who. Are aware that that's the Sears building there on the built Sears building there and then a lot of parking. So. We've got, I'm going to identify some of the major roads access access points in and out of the area. You've got Freedom Boulevard that runs north to south. You can access the property from from the north through Freedom. Uh, 1200 South on the east and on the west, you can access the property there. And then, of course, the property can be accessed by. Uh, Town Center Boulevard. It's a a loop around the property. So. Uh, that's a little bit about the the property. South, it's in the East Bay neighborhood. Uh, neighborhood meeting was held. I had some good participation there. A couple of other things I'd point out as you've, as many of you are aware, there's a U V X stop right there, Utah Valley. Uh, I can't remember what the X stands for, but I think we're all aware of the U V X and and. Uh, that's, that's U V X stop. And so we've also got the front runner station up here. So it. Again, the rezone request is for the. I Todd interim transit oriented development zone. So they're proposing to take advantage of proximity to some of the. The transit options in the area. Take you on. Here's a another if my clicker will work. Maybe. I apologize that when I first touched this, it was kind of acting weird and then it started working. It's not not working again. There we go. Um, I think the battery might be dying in this. Um, so you've got a little bit of a bird's eye view of the proposal here. They're proposing three buildings and we'll get a little more into the the site plan. I just wanted to kind of give you a little bird's eye view of the of the proposal and. Uh, general land, general land use designation for this property is commercial. And that seems to fit well with the current use and and this proposed use is very supportive of commercial and fits well with it. Current zoning and land, current zoning and land use designation, I've noted. I should note rather that this is the regional shopping center S C three commercial land use designation. Um, a couple of things on on the zone. Wanted to point out a couple of things on the purpose of the I O T D zone. The the primary use is for residential residential support mixed use development, residential and support mixed use development, which is intended to provide housing and business opportunities. Uh, adjacent to public transit. So we feel like this is, uh, this is that it it's. This is a residential proposal. Uh, the the concept plan is residential in nature. There's no commercial component to it, but it's. Staff sees it as very supportive of the existing commercial. Commercial uses on the property. The other thing I would say is the I O T D zone is characterized by clean, well lit streets and ample pedestrian ways. So again, proximity to the tran, the front runner and then U V X are definitely positives for this, for this location. A little bit about the concept plan. Concept plan here, you've got three, four main areas. You've got a. Didn't mean to do that, but we've got. Three apartment buildings through one, two bedroom, three bedroom and studio apartments. And then you've got a a town home. Section right there, 42 town homes. 179 one bedroom apartments, 266 two bedroom apartments and 39 three bedroom apartments. Again. I don't know if I noted 72, 77 studios and 40 town homes. The net net density for this project is 54 units per acre. So again, net density. There is no. Net density requirement or even gross density requirement for this for this zone. So. They have laid it out well and. I would say, and I I think I'll let the developer speak to this. The developer has been very cautious to let us know that this is a concept and and that. What they may present to us in a P P A may be different than this, but conceptually they they want to do. You know, again, one, two, three bedroom and and bedroom units in town home. So parking proposed 1242. Because it's in the I O T D zone. They only need to provide 75% of what's required in our parking in our parking code and our parking code only requires 1200 units. So they're. They're exceeding, they're, they have more than 100% of what they need and really they only need 75. So. Uh, staff has encouraged them, especially considering the zone they're asking for to try to. Um, when they, especially when they get to the P P A state, the project plan stage to kind of dial back the the parking. Um, we already have had quite a, you know, I think that area is well known for the the open, open fill of the parking there. So. Uh, again, no lock coverage requirement. Uh, the applicant stating that this would increase, the population increased for this area would be about 1500. Uh, persons. Um, couple of, uh, double check here. So a couple of. I'm going to get to to the concerns here in just a moment. And I want to now this, now I've got to click this nine times to get the battery going. So elevations, um, we're going to to show you an elevation, the elevation that they have. Uh, given us for these apartment buildings is is a rendering from a project that that brick, again, Brixton Capital is is the one who is the property owner. And they've, they've done a lot of projects throughout the country. And so the one that we're going to look at here hopefully is one that for a project in Orange County, California. Hence the the palm trees that hopefully you'll see here in a minute. Now, is there another way to, can you just try, can you do the slides? Yeah. Can you go to the next one? We'll get back to that. Um, so here's, here's the concept plan. There are the elevation rather. Um, they're proposing multi-story dwellings. If I understand correctly, I think five story buildings is what they they were looking at. So. That is, uh, that they gave us a few elevations saying that they were similar. We asked them, well, can you give us, tell us which ones most similar to what you would build on this property? And then this was the one that they they said would be most similar to what would be built on the property. Could you go to the next one to the, uh, so. Again, these are just floor plans. You can kind of go through the next two or three slides. Again, they're just what they, um, now if you can go backward and just kind of. Um, what what they've got here is just floor plans for two bedroom units, three bedroom units, one bedroom studios. Um, they're very traditional floor plans. Layouts pretty, nothing, uh, nothing really. To that was out of the ordinary on those. And if you could go back to that first map with the kind of the colored lines. So those, those are the concept plans and the or the elevation and the floor plans. I would note that they did not provide an elevation for the town homes or floor floor plans for either one of those. Um, what we want to show here is, uh, this is their, what's the, what the city code calls their conceptual integrated development plan. This is kind of a connectivity plan. It shows the roads in the area, shows sidewalks. So. You can see Town Center Drive will would continue to remain where it's at. But they would add a a major road through the middle of it. And then on the west side, on the southwest side of the property, there'd be a major road there. Then these orange lines, uh, as I recall, and you can see on the map there, they are kind of access roads into the development. Um, the green lines represent new sidewalks in the the red lines. Uh, represent existing sidewalks. One of the questions we raised to the applicant, uh, and one of the concerns was, okay, so. How you've got the U V X stop right here. And, uh. How are you going to say, where's the safe pedestrian route for for, uh, for the the residents of this development? And and they noted this plan with its. Proposed and existing sidewalks that would get them to here. Uh, to this point where they could access another sidewalk and then. Get to this point right there where there's a crosswalk and then they would cross over to the to the U V X station right there or the U V X stop. So. That's, that's their response for a safe pedestrian route to to the, uh, to the U V X stop. Another concern, uh, and I guess we have no, we're, we appreciate the con, the connection right there between the mall that. Those of you who've been to the mall, probably most of you, Red Robin, Wingers. So this, they've got this little green space right here that would connect to the mall. And we like the connectivity with with existing commercial development there. Uh, staff just wants to to make sure that that what they're proposing is really going to happen. The I O T D zone is, uh, is a zone that it's flexible and can, you can do a lot of things with it. So we we want some. Staff feels like some guarantees should be. Um, provided by the applicant to make sure that that what they're proposing is actually going to be built, the connectivity, a safe passage to the to the U V X stop. And so no guarantees have been proposed by the applicant at to this point. Another. Another thing, um, so so. The other thing that that's been brought up to is. You know, they're trying to redevelop this area. Another concern staff has is. What's, we, we want to make sure that this development. Harmonizes with the existing commercial development. We don't want it to be sectioned off from from the rest of the mall property. And so we would like a guarantee. We feel like there should be a guarantee of that as well. The, uh, so those are a few concerns. Again, we want to make sure there's a safe route to the, to the, to the. U V X. And I think they've demonstrated there's a fairly reasonable way there. Maybe they could kind of. Talk a little bit about the transition from the, from this property onto onto the Penny's property, but. We so worried about, we have that concern. They've, they've somewhat, they've, they've done a good job, I think, today of 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 addressing some of that. We want, we would again, uh, ask that they provide some guarantee that they're going to do what they say. And then. We, uh, we want to make sure that there's nothing, uh, we want to make sure this harmonizes with existing development. Um, as far as, uh, the neighborhood comments, again, we've received, we, we had a good neighborhood meeting and at that meeting, my sense, and I. Reviewed some of it again, uh, yesterday. That neighborhood meeting occurred on April 1st. So I went back and and watched some of the video and. Overall, I felt like the neighborhood was fairly supportive. They had some questions and I felt like the, uh, staff felt like the applicant did a. A a good job of of addressing the some of the concerns that were raised there. Some of the things that. So most of the comments I'm going to, uh, most of the comments we've received. Most of the comments received by staff have been very supportive. Some of the things that have been said in support of the development is, hey, this is providing more. More housing. We really need more housing. This, uh, maybe, uh, a more, this again is an affordable housing, but it may be a more affordable. More more affordable than some of the other, uh, things being built in the city. Um, they, they note that T O D certainly helps with traffic congestion. Yes, it is adding more units to the. To to the city, but it's also a transit oriented development. So it's, it's a development that's going to be steering. Uh, people encouraging them to use alternative forms of of transit and utilizing the public transit in the area. Uh, and they they know the proximity to public transit. And then also, I guess, one other note concerning the proximity, they thought it'd be a good. Uh, good addition to help, uh, provide homes for some of the new medical students that will be coming into the area because of the Nortia Medical College. Um, the opposition, uh, raised a couple of the following points. He said, uh, we've had too much density. Uh, we've approved too, too many dense developments in the city recently. They, so, uh, a number of people, there were a few people who were concerned about that. People, a few people raised utility capacity as a, as a concern. Um, I'd say to that that, you know. Um, I'd say to that, that, you know, the these, if we get to the project plan stage with this, Public Works is going to thoroughly review this. And and is, it it won't be re. Application uh, for project plan wouldn't be approved unless the utilities were upgraded and there were sufficient uh, utilities to flow to a development of this uh, sort. Another thing that people brought up, one person brought up that they want more stores and and uh, no more houses. But I I think that's uh, I think more more houses are gonna, more more development downtown here or next to the mall. Is is only going to help keep what we have and perhaps uh, bring some more vitality to the mall. And then finally, uh, some people have brought up the drought as a reason to perhaps uh. Think a little more carefully about approving additional development in the city. Um, so that's that's a concern, of course. I I would say that Provo uh, has a really well-managed water system. And it's uh, we we are in one of the uh, one of the strongest positions for municipality in the state from what I'm told, so. Um, so I'm, so those were some of the the comments from the neighborhood. Um, staff um, is supportive of of this proposal, provided a few of the questions I've raised and I can be addressed. I mean, this is a proposal that's going to bring uh, people down by the mall. It's going to provide patrons for the mall. The mall is uh, has seen better days. And so we'd like to see the mall more vital, and I think that we we feel like this is going to be helpful to the mall and doing. Yeah, helpful and uh, for the mall and revitalizing uh, the uh, revitalizing. And I would say as far as the general plan, it is uh, substantially in harmony um, with the general plan. The land use designation again is commercial. There actually is a transit-oriented uh, transit transit-oriented development land use designation. And it would be uh, we advise that 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 the property is eventually re-designated. There is an ongoing general plan amendment or update occurring right now. We feel like um, the re-designation of this property could occur through that process uh, fairly reasonably, so. Um. Again, staff supportive of this, uh, provided that we um. Provided the applicant uh, addresses some of these concerns with uh, first and foremost, uh, some guarantees on on uh, doing what they say. That are proposing here and uh. And uh, addressing um, addressing that concern of making sure this isn't uh, sectioned off. That it ma- remains a harmonious development, so with that, I'll I'll end and invite any questions that you have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Larson?
Mr. Larson, I'm just curious, why is this an interim like transit-oriented development?
That's a really good question. I've asked people that have been here longer than me that same question. Um, that there was a desire to get a transit-oriented development in place. So they could start uh, taking advantage of of some of the types of requirements that are. Are traditional in a transit-oriented development, but they didn't actually get. They they didn't develop it as much as they wanted to, and that's really what what it is.
So it's really an interim zoning classification, not, i- it sort of sounds like it's in interim development. And obviously, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and it's been in place since two thousand and ten, I think, or I think approximately two thousand and ten. It's been around for ten, ten to twelve years, but I I believe what I've heard in short is that they wanted to develop these uh, this zone a little bit more. And that's why they've called it interim, because they plan, the plan was to go back and develop it a bit more.
Okay, I have two other kind of quick questions, I think. One of them, I don't know if it's you or the developer that should answer this, but I'd be interested in knowing the results of any traffic studies that have been done. Um, in association with this, um, are we looking at one more light on that area? Or is the existing light on twelve hundred north adequate? Um, I'm also curious as to where these people are supposed to get their groceries.
Yeah, fair point. Um, so as far as traffic, um, no, there was no traffic study um, submitted. Um, no traffic study, groceries, just writing that down so remember, traffic study, there wasn't one. Um, the, in working with the applicant, they've been uh, very clear in their desire to. They they. Have expressed a concern that this is a conceptual idea. And so his staff has actually asked for more information and and uh, their their concern is that. They're working with lots of different tenants and anchors and trying to provide additional information is. Requires them to get go and work with these other groups and 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 that's, they just feel like that's too early in the ballgame. And they can explain that position more, but no, no traffic study's been provided and and that would uh. Uh, that that would uh, potentially come at a late, certainly would happen at the project plan stage. Um, as far as groceries, that's a a fine question. Um, the closest grocery store to to this proposal, uh, proposed development is is Smith's. Um, can't, what's that? Sam's Club, okay. You you want to count Sam, so Sam's Club, I you you can certainly go to Sam's Club and and uh. But uh, as far as the traditional grocery store, I guess, Smith's is is probably your closest one. I know the city's been working diligently and they've uh, have had some good conversations with uh, some potential grocers. Uh, but yeah, you you're right, we don't, we don't have grocery, a grocer in the area other than Sam's Club, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Larson.
Mr. Jensen.
I thought you called me Mr. Jensen. Um, I have a few questions about the ITOD zone. Are there other places in the city that um, have ITOD zones? That you could maybe give us a comparative look with?
Um, the the front runner station is an ITOD area. That is uh, that area. And then um, I don't know how many of you are involved with the Mill Race uh, approvals, but that is also an ITOD.
So across to the north?
Or the mix? Oh, that's right, uh, yeah, forgive me, that that was.
So up on University Parkway, the mix?
Yep, the mix.
And then the housing developments to the north of the front runner station?
Yep, that's right. It was a pro zone at Mill Race.
Okay, um, you you said we want to make sure we get um, everything in order. So that we don't have some negative uses of the land, because some things are allowed in ITOD zone. So can you give us an example of what some negative scenarios would be that would be permissible in the ITOD zone that we wouldn't want to have there?
Um, they, it's primarily resident residential in nature, but it 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 allows. A lot of commercial development. Um, it's a. No, I don't have the list in front of me, but it's it's a, it's a primarily residential. Uh, primarily a residential zone that does allow uh, quite a bit of of commercial. And so uh, we we would want, I I guess primarily what we're trying to say is we do want some type of idea of what they're proposing. So that we we don't get something that we we weren't in, we weren't expecting, something that's like sectioned off, something that isn't cohesive with with the mall property.
Um, so flipping that around, does the ITOD zone restrict any of the current permissible uh, commercial uses? Is there anything that wouldn't gel with with that zone suggestion?
Uh, not that I can remember off the top of my, not that I, yeah, I wish I had a a list in front of me, but I don't. But no, I I do not, cannot think of of something that wouldn't gel. But I would uh, say one thing that I felt to mention uh, earlier is townhomes. Uh, are not currently permitted in the ITOD zone. The applicant knows that. And they have said they would propose a rezone, a a text amendment to allow um, townhomes in the ITOD zone, so.
Okay, along that same line, I've been wondering if MDR would be more appropriate for um, medium-density residential for this area? Since they're not actually proposing any commercial land use, and I'm just wondering what the allowable density is in an MDR zone?
Yeah, that'd be pretty tough. That's about almost half, allows half of of what they're asking for here. They they have a a net density of fifty-four. Um, I'm trying to remember.
There's a high-density residential.
There is a high-density that might suit them. Uh, the ITOD zone, uh, I think the the good thing about that is it does have uh, allows for a mix of commer- of commercial uses. And and so I think that that would be, I I think the ITOD is better because of the 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 allowance for mixes. There's some, I'm trying to think of some other other benefits, like the HDR. I don't remember exactly the HDR, but I assume it's similar to the MDR. There's um, lock coverage requirements. So if if I assume the HDR has the lock coverage requirement and and that would be something that would be challenging for the applicant as well. Right now, there is no no lock coverage requirement. There's no um. That there is no lock coverage requirement and it allows for twenty-five percent reduction on parking. So again, kind of going back to that IT- IOTD zone, it it's promoting uh, transit-oriented development. So it's wanting you to reduce the parking, wants you to use transit. And so that there there are some benefits uh, to for some strong benefits for the developer to use this zone over the HDRs.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Henry.
I just had a quick question on the parking. Given that the, uh, with the mall being there. And obviously, we weren't using all that parking anyway, but is there in the codes? Is there any issue with the SE three zone that the mall is now going to be out of, out of uh, compliance? Uh, in their parking by taking out this much parking?
That's a fine question. Um, that's a possibility. I didn't, I didn't honestly check for that. They, again, they're providing twelve hundred additional parking spaces. Um. That, uh, we can certainly explore that. I don't have the answer to that, though.
I know right now it's not being used.
Right.
And so, but it would just be to meet the code, but uh, so that leads into my next question. Is there a plan to share the parking and is that why there is more parking? Because it seems like some of these parking lots seem to be there to serve the mall more than the apartments. Is that why the parking is maybe higher than expected?
The applicants haven't uh, raised uh, the potential of shared parking with this development. Uh, I, yeah, the the issue of shared parking hasn't come up in our discussions.
Okay, that just the, I I like the design, but I know that probably sixty percent of people that go to this mall park where this is going. And go in through that door by the Red Robin and the the other restaurant there, so that's what triggered that question, so, okay, that's all I have.
Right, we can certainly look into that.
Any other questions for staff? Don't see anybody. Mr. Bowles, do you have anything to add? We've raised a few questions. Would you like to speak? Yes, as the applicant? Okay. Um, do you want us to maybe go through questions first, or? Thank you. Eight West, five hundred South, uh, here in Provo. Uh, also serving as the GM of the Provo Town Center, uh, the applicant is Brixton Capital. Uh, two individuals that were going to be here but had travel conflicts are John Desco, he's the Vice President of Asset Management. And Justin Lawn, who's the Vice President of Development and Construction Services. They are watching electronically today. Hello, guys. Uh, so they're watching today as well, would wish they could be here, but happy to start. And let me start with uh, Brian's question about parking. So we have two large boxes here at this uh, area. We have Cinemark and we also have JCPenney. And what what makes this complicated uh, is when we talk about land development is encumbrances. Now, I don't want to call my tenants encumbrances, but we have big leases that we promise certain things to them. And parking is very important to certain types of tenants, especially Cinemark, especially JCPenney. Oh, thank you very much. Uh, so for us, we we've had parking there. We know how much we need to provide. Now, there's a lot of parking. You can see there's a a large amount of asphalt to the south of here, so it's, will we have enough parking? I I'm fairly confident saying yes, it is, but like when we talk about parking in downtown, it's a convenience pack factor. People want to park as close to something as possible, uh, and that's why uh, I'm I'm not going to marry this question yet with the whole guarantees issue. Will that parking lot be right here or will it be right here? It's hard for us to say, because anytime that we impact any area outside of the main mall. We need approvals from our development partners to do so. It is written in, like, we have the code here for Provo City. We have our own code. It's called the DDA. It's a big binder and we have to follow it. So uh, when we submitted this concept plan, we had one tenant who heard about it. It was not happy with us. And he said, this better not be a project plan. This is not a project plan. This is a concept plan. When we get to that process, you will be involved in all of our discussions. And they wrote back, good. That's it. So it's, for us, we take this issue very seriously, especially with parking, not just for our uh, our future residents. You can see, we want to integrate parking as much as possible, because we want to take advantage of IOT, I the IOT, ITOD. Like Brandon has stated, yes, we are overparked for the ITOD. If we can bring that number down, absolutely, we want to bring that number down. We want to be compliant with with that zone. Uh, because initially, we started looking at a PUD. That's what we wanted to look at and say, hey, what are the unique needs and subsets that we need for this area to accommodate commercial growth? To accommodate people living down in East Bay to really make, when you're coming down. Freedom here, that when you hit this intersection, you're not seeing this awful T-intersection that looks into a sea of asphalt. What what's a real sense of arrival? And this has really been something that Brixton Capital has taken an extraordinary amount of time to say. What what can we do? And in our discussions, when we talked about a PUD, the staff brought up to us, said, well, why not at an ITOD? And we took that idea back, looked at it, look at the existing area around the front runner and said, this could work. So we had existing drawings, a few of them, when we put this together based on it, is it fully compliant? No, uh, it it's not. And that's why we really want that project plan process, where we will be able to sit down with all the city departments, all the commissions, all the boards, all the neighborhoods. And get to the process where we have more of a solid plan set, that we can also involve all of our development partners. And so they can have their say, which they do have a right to do so. Uh, and to the point of Brandon that's that he's made and staff has made to us uh, regarding guarantees, especially with connectivity. Especially with uh, sidewalk access. Uh, it's it's not our intention to build an Ashton, like you see up in uh, in Orem, where Woodbury's done a wonderful job with some of their mixed-use housing. Their first product type was the Ashtons in the northeast corner, beautiful housing stock, but surrounded by asphalt. That doesn't benefit anybody. Uh, it's our intention to ensure that this integrates well, not just for our commercial asset. But also for the surrounding community. We have neighbors and we respect. Who they are, what they are, and 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 the type of quality of life that they enjoy. Uh, and when we were putting these plans together, and I'm glad to see Public Works here, one of the biggest complications we'll have in guaranteeing where something's at. Is the massive amount of utilities underneath these parking lots. So if you've ever been out there in that large parking lot after a nice blanket of snow, you'll see that there is always. This large swath that's never has snow on it, and it runs parallel across this parking lot. From two hundred to twelve hundred South, and it's sewer utility. And obviously, uh, Mr. Day said, uh, buildings cannot be on the top of existing infrastructure. Well, all three of these buildings would sit on top of existing infrastructure. So for us, that project plan is absolutely necessary. One of the first things would be traffic and utilities. Doing studies and saying, how do we move these utilities to a place where we can actually facilitate building growth? Where can we do it? Uh, because right now, as it is, both to facilitate tenant use and also the surrounding area, which we have. Utilities that even run from the Elks down into this area. Those are going to need more broad discussion. So to that point of, have we done a traffic study? No, we have not. Will we do one? Oh, absolutely, we will do one. We'll do multiple studies, because we also want to understand. We don't want to bring in inordinate amount of traffic that's going to congest the area. We need to make sure that our retail ways stay open, they stay welcoming, and that it's also open and welcoming to the community. We understand that this is a gateway entrance and we want it to be that way. So other questions that I I know I have missed, I'm sorry, so uh, what other things can I answer? So what other things can I answer for the commission?
Commissioner Giaga. I'm looking at your parking lots and the city has changed their rules for trees in parking lots. And these are not compliant with the the new standards, as I understand it. I'm assuming that that will all be part of the development.
Of course, yes. So and and just even today, I was talking with Mr. Desco, Mr. Lawn, and we were looking through the difference between concept plan submittals and project plan submittals. Absolutely expect a full landscape plan for the entire area to be submitted at that time. And we expect it to be compliant with the city code and with what ITOD states. So yeah, it's, all right, so just for also a point of consideration, are you saying that it requires more trees or are there actually less trees required?
I think that the requirement now is one tree for every six or 12 spaces, more or less. And it has to be scattered through, sort of like the diamond thing that, you know, has.
Yeah, with the islands, yeah.
Just to to cool down
Sure.
that black surface that you've got. And so I they're trying to reduce the heat islands that come out of parking lots. And Mr. Weaver over there knows more precisely and can, I'm sure we'll have comments to say when that comes up. But I know this is a concept plan, so we're trying to figure out where this lays in the
Sure.
the whole process, but thank you.
And to that point, obviously, we want to provide as much information as we can factually give at this point. What we don't want to do is prevent, provide information that is just like, well, it's in there, so let's just throw something out. We're trying to give the best guess at this point. And I can't emphasize enough how important it is for us to go to our development partners. And I know this has been a discussion with city staff quite extensively, where we say that, you know, not to say an encumbrance, but it is an encumbrance. We can't say, let's keep pushing forward. And then when, hey, we have a final plan, here you go, guys. Just, you know, this is what we're going to do.
So at this point, I understand that you're not ready to do that. But would you be willing to enter into a development agreement with the city further down to make sure that the concerns are met?
I can't answer that. That would have to be Mr. Desco that answers that. And it would depend on the how far down the road. I'm fairly confident in saying that if they have approvals on their end from development partners and they understand the general scope of what they can do and what they're allowed to do, that they'd be willing to work with city staff to say, here are the guarantees that we can deliver on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Jensen.
So we have just approved a lot of this same housing type in South Provo, including some in East Bay. And it hasn't been built yet. So I'm just trying to, maybe this is just throwing a question out there that won't have an answer yet. But I'm very curious about how we determine when enough is enough. And because I don't want to approve a beautiful project and have it be unoccupied. So I was wondering if you have any information that you can give us about ownership? Are these units going to be centrally owned and then rented? Or are they going to be individually owned? Like, what sort of a occupancy, is demographic the right word, a mix of occupancy would we expect there? You know, is it going to be very transitional or is it going to be more stable? I mean, that's that's a guess anyway. But you've also compared it to what's up by Costco in Orem. And I love that you're trying not to have that be just like a bunch of housing on the edge of the parking lot. But what are some negative things that you've seen there besides an asphalt sea that you are trying to avoid? How do you want to make it better? Maybe even what's their occupancy like? I'm sure you've done some sort of a comparison. Is it stable? Is it turning over? Are they having problems that you know of that you want to try and do better than they learn from their mistakes? Is there anything on that that you can maybe give us a peek inside of what your intent and your observations have been?
So intent is always this. No one ever wants to build something that's not used because that's a pretty poor financial investment. But beyond the finances of it, it's a poor community investment. When you build infrastructure that's not used, it becomes a liability because there's a cost for upkeep. And if it's not kept up, then it becomes a blight. If it becomes a blight, then it's everyone's problem. So that being said, market studies are extremely important to us. Now, for us to do a market study, we have to look at specifically what we are approved to do. Since we don't know if the zone's approved, since we don't know if the concept's approved, we can't perform market studies. We absolutely can't. So our hope is, is once the approvals are gained for a zone and for a concept, we can immediately go out to those development professionals and those consultants and say, here's what we need. Market studies are definitely at that. I can tell you what I'd like to see as a resident close by, because where I live, the transancy rate is extremely high. One of my colleagues right behind me, Mr. Sam Acuna, who is my specialty leasing marketing manager, he just moved here from Arizona. Hired him from just little area called Santan Valley, if you know where that's at, East Valley to south of Queen Creek. And he had to move to Vineyard in order to find a place for his wife, three daughters, and a dog named Scrappy to live. And that frustrates me. It frustrates my client and I know it frustrates this community. So our intent is not to build something out of impunity. It's to build something with purpose. And I don't have a market study here, at least that I can hand to you and say, here it is. It's just the time is not right at this point. And I know that some people sit there and go, well, it makes sense. And some people go, no, that doesn't make sense. And for us, we can't do market studies for something we don't know is allowed. If it is allowed, yes, we want to know. I would love to see a good mix of, you know, things that want people to stay. You know, I, for a long term, I guarantee there'll be young students that are BYU. Hey, I'll be here for the next nine months and I'm kicking out. I'm going to do pest control sales in Florida or something, right? We're never going to get out of that cycle. But I want to look more towards long term residency as well, really establishing people here. Because when Brandon talks about numbers, it's like, oh, you're talking about 1,500 people. That's a lot of people and and we're cognizant of that fact. So in conclusion, at least, I I look at the Ashtons and say, yeah, I don't like the sea of asphalt. One thing we do like about it is how they utilize the land use, how they integrated parking, how they're able to phase that development so well, almost seamlessly. And they really took an area, which was a couple of single family homes, some scrubby looking trees, and they really built something beautiful. And I think without without consultation with Woodbury Corporation, I think their whole goal is, well, we have a shopping center and we have an outdoor food and entertainment venue. And then we have the Ashtons and now we kind of have to fill in, right? Well, our issue is, we've got something already in the middle. What do we do around it? Do we really need up to 6,000 parking spots? I submit we don't. I submit that it's infrastructure that's not used. And if structure's not used, has potential to become blight, just like a restaurant that has 200 seats and only 15 are filled, people are going to go, must not be a pretty good restaurant. If not, all the seats are filled, right? Perception is a strong tool in our industry. And the purpose is not to change a perception as more as it is to provide an asset that the community needs. You're welcome. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Gonzalez? Okay, okay, super. Thanks. Mr. Henry.
So a lot of thoughts here. First, I'm glad you guys are starting at this point. This is really good and and I like what I'm seeing so far. A couple of questions. One, traffic was brought up in the letters from the public, and so I do want to address that. And for me, in my studies, I find that the way you reduce traffic has reduced the origin and the destination. Origin being home, destination being everything else you do.
Sure.
And as I look at this, as well as the comments about ITOD having commercial, in this particular concept, Freedom Boulevard, where it comes in and kind of comes down the middle.
Yeah.
As well as it's near that gateway to the mall. Would would you be interested or would you be inclined to put some commercial there for like a chip cookie and a hairdresser? And those kind of things that provide one less reason for someone to leave the neighborhood?
I don't want to be the broker editor and say, oh, let's see what the market study says. But I look at it this way. So I ride my bike everywhere in Provo. I ride my bike every day to work because I live on Fifth South and Fifth West, so it's very close. Every time I come down Freedom, I always think, how cool would it be to see it rode through here and seen like maybe a nice corner commercial, right? That would look neat. But in this industry, I know enough, it's like, looks cool and is able to be leasable and productive and be a piece of usable infrastructure is a totally separate argument.
Right, right.
So ideally, yes, because it makes sense. And we're seeing a lot more trends, especially for that type of commercial. They'll say, yeah, we love that stuff, but it's their drive through capability. Because a point of interest is, I was discussing this earlier with a staff member. We were working on this back in February of 2020, when the first plane load of people came from China into the Air Force Base not too far away from where Brixton's headquarters is. It was our intent to be here a long time ago. And it's interesting to see the way that COVID-19 has changed people's consumption habits, where people got, you know, the cell phones that we all carry in our pockets and how amazing technology was able to make retail so much more effective. And how effective, as much as we want to reduce the dependency on car culture, especially in growing areas like Provo. Right, we want to take pressure off. Food people love cars. They absolutely love it, convenience in and out. So we'd want to look and say, well, we don't want to like double down on that because from our standpoint, too, land use wise, takes a lot of land. Just anytime you're just going around to drive through, look how much land it takes up. Even ones like Chick-fil-A who are pretty good at consolidating space, it still takes up space. So we want to be true to that ITOD and what commercial is going to best fit that. We have experts on our team, but we want lots of experts. And we also care about what the community wants. So does it fit? Sure, I think it'd look awesome, but let's, we want to make sure that it's the right fit.
Sure, sure. Yeah. The only other comment, oh, I just wanted to clarify. You said something as as you were getting into this, that when you get to the the design phase, you're going to start with the traffic and utilities?
It's probably the most largest encumbrance on the land we have right now. Because I know Public Works has stated, we love the idea of bringing more connectivity to this area. Because right now, I mean, you have to go way around. The Ring Road is beautiful. It has a high amount of volume of traffic. And, you know, UTA has said, like, when they were, they were looking at places to do it. They said, this area where that bus stop is, it was just perfect for them. They said, no, we don't want to move it. We were saying, hey, you can move it out here in the middle of the parking lot. And we even gave schematics out to them. We could build housing around it. They're like, nope, we love this space. And they give a whole list of reasons. But utilities are absolutely paramount. And like, do we really want a 90 degree turn here on this road next to the kiss and stop? Probably not. I'm sure traffic will have something to say about it. And how's going to be the easiest flow? How do we avoid traffic backup? How do we avoid congestion? It's it's not 100% because we do need those studies. Now, if Mr. Desco and Mr. Lawn were sitting here, they'd probably be like, well, maybe we would do something different. But I know for certain, they would say, yes, utilities in traffic is extremely important because those things matter to our tenants as well.
I just, I guess, my 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 suggestion would be, while those are very important and they are integral parts of the development.
Sure.
Start with the human experience and then see if we can make the utilities work with that.
Oh, absolutely. No, no, yeah.
I would hate to see a design that, well, the sewer line's here, so that's why we designed it that way. That's a terrible reason to me to design something.
Very good point, Brian. No, I, we completely agree. That's, it would be kind of a whole hands on, right, deck approach, right? And it's, it's, we can build the best of things, but if people can't flush a toilet or or cook a bagel, you know, and there's a toaster, then it's all for naught. But no, very good point, though. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I just think about the the access to the the front runner stop. And and as you mentioned, people love to park right in front of where they're going.
Sure.
I don't think that's 100% true. I think in low quality developments, they want to park right there because it's just not a good experience. So they want to spend the least amount of time in a hot, muggy parking lot that they can. Center Street in Provo, you know, if you're two blocks away, it's not that big of a deal to most people. It's the experience. So as people are walking to that front runner stop, is it a good experience? They're not going to walk if it's not. They're going to jump in their car and they're going to drive every time. To just create these experiences and keep that top of mind, the human experience in these spaces. Is it just, I don't mean to offend any engineers, but is it an engineered solution or a design solution? Engineering is very important, but to me, engineering is not design. That's all I've got. I think I've offended enough people.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? If not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to us tonight? Please come on up. Is this a neighbor here? Okay, we'll go, we'll go next to. Yes, please state your name.
Daniel Friend. I actually live a block and a half north of this proposal. And I would like to speak in cautious favor of this. Right now, the parking lots that are there are completely unused. They're this hot, black sea of awfulness that I have to cross with my girls every time we want to go to the mall to use the amenities in there. And I really like the idea of having some good quality housing here. It's the right place because of its location near to the public transit. It's a much better use of the land than what's going on here. I want to make sure that the planning commission is involved in this because the difference between a good apartment complex and a bad apartment complex is in the small details that are hashed out by this body. I want to make sure that there is enough green space, particularly outside play space for any families that will be living here. There are other developments, parks or playgrounds nearby. Would want to make sure that there's enough of that type of space for the people who'll be living in this place so that ours don't get overrun by neighbors who are just going to ignore the sign of this is for so and so development only. Because we can all share alike as long as there's enough around. And I hope that we can get those kinds of details right so that we can have a good development here because the space right now is not being used well. This would be a much better use of it. And I hope that this commission can get the details right so that it's a positive experience for all of us involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this tonight?
Dave Connect, Southeast Provo. So it does have, at least in the conceptual plan, a mix of housing types, units, which means different people, different people in different types or phases of their lives will have their opportunity to live here. And that's good. I'm just wondering, if you look at the downtown as a whole and everything that has been built so far and in looking forward at this project and obviously the ones to come. Scott mentioned that there's just this tremendous transancy, especially in that that neighborhood Franklin South. But how do you get people to have that that long term occupancy? And typically, it's when people actually buy into something rather than just making it a nice rental and hoping that they stick around. And I'm not sure if Millrais, which projects are proposing condos and delivering condos, something that people can actually buy. But right now in downtown Provo, I'm not sure that there's anything existing that you can buy. And I find that concerning and I know others I have heard from feel that that's a concern. We can't necessarily make somebody build condos. I'm not sure how to incentivize that outcome. But I just want to put it on your radar as one of the important elements of having a mix of housing is having something that would be owner occupied.
Thank you. Going once, anybody? Going once. Anybody?
I forgot something I wanted to say.
If you can make it quick, you bet.
Um, about the only thing that I was hesitant to believe in the, in the neighborhood meeting was the assertion that traffic would not increase significantly on Freedom Boulevard. Um, obviously we'll want to see the traffic plans, but I think that it can be mitigated if it does increase. Why, why is planning with, say, um, another crosswalk at one of the cross streets there that you see on the map? Or perhaps speed bumps in an appropriate place. I don't, not a traffic engineer, so I don't know the full details, but I think that, uh, steps taken to mitigate traffic increases would be very useful in developing this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Nobody objects? We'll close the public hearing. Are we doing like a hybrid online? Is there anybody else that might remotely want to? Great. Okay, super. Any concerns to closing public hearing then? All right, great. We will close the public hearing and turn the discussion back to the commission. Maybe no one wants to jump in? Go for it.
Yeah, I'll jump in. Uh, like in terms of, there's been a big concern with housing affordability and owner occupancy. And while we'd all like to see that, I some ways I don't view that as the responsibility of the developer. I, I see that as the responsibility of employers. If, if you want a stable community where people are invested long-term, then employers have to provide jobs that pay a livable salary where someone can buy a home. And in today's market, like, we don't see that. And so, yeah, we're seeing a ton of rental properties. A second thing, uh, I think it was kind of mentioned by staff, a little, little bit disappointment in not seeing, uh, the development take on, take advantage of parking reductions. Especially with being in the ITOD zone, but also, um, possibly with shared parking agreements with the, with the mall. I, I see, um, you know, you look at the mall, the hours of a mall being from late morning till till evening. And, and, uh, I mean, there are some, some crosswind with parking, but, um, seems like there there should be, uh, well, I'm stumbling here. I'd like to see, uh, a parking reduction in, in this development and, and with that replaced with, uh, more landscaping amenities, some more green space. Take advantage of the, the less parking, um, that the zone requires and, and and make it more, uh, more green, more beautiful. Cause I'm still, I'm still looking at this, this conceptual aerial view and it, I'm saying there's, it's still concrete and asphalt. And with trees here and there. That, that's all I have to say at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jensen?
Um, I actually disagree with Mr. Gonzalez because I feel like parking reductions in residential, um, don't usually end up working out well. People are going to come with a car and if they live close to public transportation, we want them to use it, but they're still going to have a car and they still need somewhere to park it. So I actually applaud the fact that you have proposed an abundance of parking. Because I feel like, um, at least in many of the recent developments, that's something we've seen hasn't worked as well as we hoped. And I know there's, there's some planning strategies to just simply not providing parking so that they don't come with their cars. But I don't know how to plan for that in the interim. This being an interim zone after all. I don't know how to plan for that without creating a problem that will, that will ooze over to the neighborhood streets. So that's just a comment. I love the proximity to the transit. I love bringing life to East Bay. I feel, I loved, um, Commissioner Henry's idea about making the pedestrian experience between this development and the front runner station a positive experience. Cause right now it's not a super fun street to walk down. Um, I know that's not the developers realm, but it's something to take into consideration. And one thing I was thinking about is bike lanes between the, this property and the front runner station because it's not a super. I mean, in a car, I've been almost hit multiple times at the roundabout on, what is that, 900 South, 600 South, whatever that was, 900, I think. 920. Um, so that's something to take into account also that we need to, if we really want this to be an ITOD zone and to plan for it to be used with, with that in mind, that people will be taking advantage of the UVX stop and the front runner station nearby, then we need to make that area in between something that's, um, safely accessible. So, um, the other thing I just want to point out, I think Commissioner Urquaga said this earlier, but um, 1200 South on the east side of this property is a really tricky intersection to navigate with traffic as it is right now. And so I think that would be something that would definitely have to be taken care of in the, the next stages of of approval to make sure that there's turn lanes and through lanes and um, turn arrows and whatever is required to make sure that people don't have to wait three cycles to get where they're going. To get to the commercial that we built their homes really close to so that it would be easy for them. And possibly take into account the fact that we're hoping they're walking or biking there too. That will add a new demographic of transportation there. So those were the things that I wanted to just bring up as a commission that I was worried about with whether we like the parking, whether we don't like the parking, whether we like the, the scenario. I really, I think this is a good thing. I wish we could do a residential zone instead of a mixed zone, but I don't know if that's ours to change our mind about today.
Mr. Urquaga, it looks like.
Yeah. Um, so I, I like a blend of this. I think we need to be careful about limiting parking too much. Um, because I do think there's going to be spillover. And mixed or shared use between the mall and this development would protect the surrounding areas. So I don't have a problem with that. I do like the idea of increasing some green space. And, um, I don't know particularly among, with the townhomes, which I would assume if you can get that text amendment and do the townhomes, those would be intended to be purchased and owner occupied most likely. Um, and family living. It would make sense to have some playground type amenities in that area. So that's just something for the developers to kind of keep in mind as they're looking at that. Um, I do like the overall overall concept. Um, one of the things that we have had, and I, this is really directed at staff, um, for future discussions. But, um, one of our concerns as a planning commission has been so many times. Um, the concepts are not clear. And yet by the time the plans come to us, um, our ability to make changes to those is more limited. And so I think as we are looking at the procedure going forward, um, this is something we need to discuss in a work meeting or something like that to see what our options are. Um, because I do like this concept. Um, I am very cognizant of the concerns that the staff have and the city departments have and the need to kind of make sure that that is all worked out. And I know that's what you want to do. So that there is some motivation to do that, but we're not part of that process. Um, once we sign off on the concept. And so, um, those kinds of commitments are important.
I'm going to go ahead and follow that because Commissioner Urquaga, you really hit on probably the most significant things for me at this point. Um, I don't disagree with very many of the things that any commissioners have said tonight. So I won't necessarily go through all those again. Um, try to avoid that redundancy, but I really, really think that in as much in the past, we've been asked to look at pretty loose concepts related to changing the law, changing the zoning of properties. I think this is the loosest that we've ever seen in terms of having conversations about uh, really, really significant changes that are anticipated to be made to what we're seeing tonight, which really makes me feel like this is, this is way beyond premature even. Maybe even to have on an agenda is my opinion relative to asking to having the zoning changed. So um, with that, uh, again, to, to get into the details of how much parking that you have or don't and what you know, the look and feel of the project will be uh, to, to get my head around what that likely would be and, um, what opportunities would exist in the future to to maybe influence that. Uh, that's, that's a really significant concern about acting on the, the zoning proposal tonight. Um, that being said, maybe a little bit bigger picture for me as well. There are changes happening on the property. Unfortunately, I think with, with big retailers leaving, some of the changes certainly haven't been good. I think something does need to does need to occur. Um, the history here for me is really, really interesting, given that this is a land use that's just barely 20 years old. It's obsolete and I'm afraid it's probably been obsolete for close to half of its life. You know, really it, um, it's a, it's a model that was on its way out when this came along in Provo. And if anything for me, that's a lesson as to how important it is to be very methodical and analytical and deliberate about changing things going forward. And I, I don't in any way uh, mean to, um, suggest that the applicant's not working to do that. They have as much at stake as anybody to make, uh, this part of, um, what for me really is a bigger project work and work to I think accomplish a lot of different things. Um, that's maybe my segue into my other thought though, which is that, uh, in as much as change is needed for the property, I feel like tonight we're seeing, seeing kind of half of the picture. And I don't know if there are, are, uh, you know, really active, um, current thoughts as to what happens, uh, south of this part of the site in terms of maybe other changes that likewise are helping to make it more viable and, and just, uh, functional going forward. But, uh, really for me, this is, this is just windowing out part of something that again, like I said, it absolutely needs to change. But, um, I, I'm really having a hard time getting, again, I'll say just my head around how this fits in with everything else. Um, you know, but for some things I agree with the idea that additional rooftops, um, typically in close proximity to, to things like retail uses, they're a good thing. But, uh, I don't necessarily think that this is a magic bullet that that is going to, uh, you know, turn what right now I think is probably a liability for a community into an asset. Um, traffic. So maybe get down to the last of the things that I I think are maybe worth mentioning now. Traffic for me is also very interesting. I think there is a big traffic problem here now. And it's not that there are, you know, too long delays at traffic signals and that type of thing. I mean, driving traffic to the site, that is like of paramount importance. Uh, whether people get there using mass transit or, you know, single occupancy vehicles or, or anything like that. Um, having a parking problem, I think would be wonderful. You know, in terms of, um, seeing the site someday underparked and that sort of a thing. Um, but yet being responsible to make sure that, um, you know, perhaps the, the needs and requirements of future tenants are met, you know, by way of parking that's available and that sort of a thing, just big picture things. Um, there's a lot to balance and um, I can't remember if I've said this, I've thought it many times. I don't know what exactly you do. I, I, uh, I don't envy the position Scott that you're in, you know, with, uh, you know, trying to satisfy what I think are a lot of different interests to try to, you know, keep a property um, operating and, you know, operating is, is close to, you know, it's full capacity as you, you can, you can have that happen and those types of things. But again, I think that for what we're asked to do in terms of making a recommendation on zoning and how important it is to have an understanding as to what that leads to. Um, when the zone is changed, uh, I think this is premature tonight. And maybe to circle all the way back to what Commissioner Urquaga said. Um, I'm much more accustomed to seeing project plans with zone changes after maybe there's been a conversation like this to express some, it may be high-level thoughts, but then an applicant takes back and they work into a more concrete plan. That, um, you know, then maybe if there is a development agreement, it's just exhibit an agreement and that's it. And, you know, there's not much left to be, um, left to be wondered after that. So those are my thoughts. And, yeah, please, Mr. Henry.
Okay. For me, I feel like the, the point we're at on this is like in the car industry, the concept car. We haven't figured out the steering wing cages. We haven't figured out the suspension system, but we're getting an idea of what we hope we're going to have so that we have a platform to now make decisions to tweak and adjust and, and, uh, make the changes to make it a roadworthy vehicle. Uh, as I, as I look at this, overall, the concept, I like the start and I'm trying to figure out how we can help the applicant get to the next phase they need to while also feeling confident that we're going to get what we want in the end. Um, because there are a few things, the townhomes to me, I feel need some work. Uh, I feel like again, that looks like an engineered solution, not a designed solution. Uh, I'm curious why the buildings are so far from the mall. Which leads me to wonder if there's future plans we're not seeing to further develop these down the road. Uh, and then it is very tricky to as we think about parking and, and traffic, again, it comes down to how complete is the neighborhood? Are there enough amenities that people don't need to leave enough? They can get rid of one car. And, uh, maybe they're down to just one car and a family. And, and I don't think this is anywhere near where someone's going to get rid of all their cars. Yet, maybe that comes along someday. But yeah, that, that human experience. I think this is a fantastic start. There's obviously a lot of details that haven't been figured out yet. So how to proceed tonight so that the applicant has enough confidence to move forward to better refined designs? Curious what other commissioners might think on how we can do that.
Yeah, I was going to kind of wonder what staff, um, input would be if, if we were to say the concept was approved, but the the rezone would need to come back with the plan. Um, with the, the project plan is that we haven't done that in the past, but that seems like it's more of a, I do agree that we, we want the applicant to move forward on this. We want them to have some confidence that they're going to be able to move forward on this. Um, but whether, um, that, I think that we also want to have some more assurances that they can't give us now because they can't move forward. Um, and I just don't know where to go from here because I do, I like this. I like the applicant to be able to move forward. Um, I agree with Commissioner Anderson that maybe rezoning at this point is, um, jumping the gun a bit. So I don't know what our options are.
I guess I, would it be okay to ask the applicant or the applicant a, a quick question? Uh, would approval, what, what would approval of the concept plan do for you at this point?
Uh, to speak very bluntly, for our process moving forward. So we have pools of people we will work with. Obviously we have developers and development consultants. People are going to survey the earth. Like, and, and lots of people ask, well, why, why is this so far out? Because there's a grade here. Do we keep the gate grade? Do we not keep the grade? Do we put another entrance here? All of those things, ladies and gentlemen, require tenant approval. If we affect the ingress and egress of the center whatsoever, it needs tenant approval. So with that being said, without a concept, without a zone, we can't go to tenants that have differing viewpoints because they have differing service products. We have to have a package to say, Provo City is okay with this zone type. They're okay with this, with this concept, knowing that here are the things that have been said. The great things like The great things like the human experience, the landscaping, the reduction of parking, wanting to get people closer to the center, ensuring traffics there. Because no tenant is ever going to say, no, I want less traffic. Yeah, they want to see that too, but to a point, right? Because it is this hard balance. We're not talking about an old alfalfa field where the guy doesn't want to do crops anymore. And it's super easy to look at that. We're talking about something that has encumbrances on it, that has conflicts, that has contracts. So for us, and this is an issue that Dave, no one wants to be in my position, right? No one does. It's a hard position to be in. It's a harder position to be in when you're an ownership group trying to balance conflicting views with tenants. Some that work well together, but most of them would say that yes, multifamily is a great idea. That's the only reason we are here. But for layout, they'll probably disagree. For accessibility, they may disagree. So we need to go back and figure that out. And then come back and say, hey, let's go through project plan approval and get to a point where we have some sensibility and some congruence and go back to the development partners. A lot of back and forth, but right now we need to create a baseline. What is expected? What will be allowed? Is the zone allowed? Is the concept allowed in terms of, do we want multifamily here? Like when you say the townhomes look very engineered, correct? Because we don't know if they'll be allowed. So it's, it's a hard thing to ask a owner to spend tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands of dollars in design studies and market studies for something they don't know. If they can actually go to their development partners and say, here's the facts. It's not because they're cheap. It's because they need to know what they can do. Okay? So Brandon, that's, that's where we are at, at this point. It's, it's not because we're just trying to throw away and just throw out the like, well, let's just stick something on a piece of paper and let's get approval. That's not what we're doing here. We're doing as much information as we can with the approvals we have to this point. This is where we are at.
Um, thank you.
Staff uh certainly has noted its concerns. Um, I think first and foremost, this process to staff. Um, you know, to, to us is, is does the zone fit? And if the zone fits, then it, then we, we feel like, you know, the other things can be worked out. Um, we, we definitely are concerned about uh the, the issues I've noted earlier. We want to, we, we would like some additional guarantees that what they're proposing uh are, are actually going to be done. But, but I guess my biggest question here is, does the zone fit?
Yeah, and maybe just a couple of comments on the idea that uh this is adequate detail and that adequate effort's gone into what we're seeing tonight. Um, I by no means think, think it's unreasonable to expect to see a concept plan with a zone change, certainly not for something of this significance. You know, we're not talking about a a six unit townhome building or something of that nature. This, this is, this is tremendous. Um, with one of, I think, the more important properties for Provo City to get right going forward. Uh, and boy, dealing with design constraints at this point, like where utilities are and those types of things. Um, uh, those are just fundamentals that uh for a commission to be asked to act on a layout that hasn't accounted for some of those fundamentals, I think puts us in a really um unenviable position. Uh, as we're trying to, to be uh deliberate and uh uh look out for what's best for the community. So uh, you know, that along with the idea as well that um we're certainly talking about many, many millions of dollars worth of investment here. And I concur that uh it's customarily expensive. A way of costing, you know, maybe tens of thousands of dollars to uh design proposals and things like that for communities to consider before you know what you're going to get in the end, before you get entitlements and that sort of a thing. And that's the world that we live in. That's, that is the, that is uh developing property 101. It, it takes an investment to provide the kinds of assurances that typically communities want to want to have before they, they give the kind of guarantee that you absolutely give with zoning. So um, I think that's worth considering as well. I, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect to to have plans that are, that are more uh more likely to be real than what we're seeing tonight. Yes, Mr. Jensen.
I keep thinking about what Mr. Larson said, does the zone fit? Is that, I mean, are we overthinking this at this stage? Because we've also talked about concept plan versus project plan and how much we should require and at what point we don't have input anymore and not wanting to let something go that we don't have any fingers on it after it leaves us. But do any of us have an opposition to this zone change? So is that something to consider as we're worried about the concept plan? Is it maybe not a problem to say, I like the zone? I like the idea of, yes, it's in between two big transportation amenities and next to the freeway, close to the freeway, you know, like is that, is that enough to say, let's move the zone change forward? I'm just throwing that out there as food for thought.
I'd kind of like to get the applicant's feedback on that. If we were to approve the zone, um, but not, not the concept, given the issues with the um utilities and other things that would need to be resolved. Does that give you assurance to move forward?
So my question to the commission would be this. What do you want to see? Because if we do the zone, because in working with staff, because our, our neighborhood meeting was all the way back in April and they've been constantly saying provide this information and this and this and this. So we'll make some changes and come back. And then probably say, well, we want to see more changes and then come back and then come back. So according to the code, we've submitted all the information that we can submit at this time. Um, now, if there's something egregiously missing, then by all means, I, I, if, if for us, the applicant were here, they'd probably say, yeah, well, we want to provide that. But the, the question for me standing here would be what would give you as a commission that confidence than to approve a concept plan? Because we can't go to our development partners with just with just one leg. We need both legs to run with this race.
Okay, and, and you're sort of, you're coming into history, which is not necessarily fair to you. But um, what we have, um, what we understand from the way that the, the code is laid out is that once we approve the concept, we don't really have a whole lot more input in changing the actual development plan um, once that happens is, is, and so we're always reluctant to say, sure, go with it. Um, when we know that we might not be able to tweak later. And that's, that's kind of where I think a number of us are concerned. Um,
Mr. Larson has clarifying language on that question.
Oh, does, do you? Okay, how does that work?
Um, if, I guess the, the short answer is once, if, if, if the city acts to approve that zone, your their ability to legislate is gone. They don't, you know, this is, this is the city's chance. Uh, you have an opportunity to recommend something to the city council and the city council has the opportunity to act perhaps as early as next Tuesday. And once that approval is, you know, once that approval has been given, they have the, the right to come in and, and uh work under the, the requirements of the ITOD zone. So that, that's one thing to consider. I mean, you could still re, I guess, condition of approval upon them bringing in a concept plan that's more um still more developed, but still that it, it'd just be like a pre, pre applicant or a pre project plan application and they'd still have to do that one too.
So if we were to, um, I'm trying to think of a way to phrase this that is reassuring to the applicant because I don't think any of us want to see this stopped or held back. Um, but would also be reassuring to the members of the commission. Um, so approving project plan or concept plan um with the caveat that all of the agreements with the city need to be resolved, all the concerns of the city need to be resolved um before a final plan can be submitted.
Yeah, I think that that can be done. Um,
Including.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so your discretion goes away when the zoning is granted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you hold back on the concept plan, but move the zone forward, the zoning gets approved, your discretion on the new concept plan that comes forward or a project plan, if they come forward with that, your discretion is really minimized because if they meet the requirements of the zone, we have to approve it. If you um, say that you're approving the concept, but you're holding back on the zone. If you've approved the concept or sent that message that you're comfortable with the concept, that sends the signal to the city council that you're okay with the zone if you've approved that concept plan. So in addition to that, whatever discretionary things we need to get in writing or get um memorialized in some kind of way, that needs to be in a development agreement, then it needs to be at the zone change stage. There is no development agreement at the project plan stage. Brandon has voiced some concerns that we have that need to be in a development agreement. If this just moves forward without a development agreement, a future property owner could buy the ITOD property and put a wall up between the two projects. Now you would say, who in their right mind would do that? I've learned not ever to gamble in those kinds of scenarios. Okay? Somebody will surprise you and do something you didn't want to have happen. So if it's really important, you don't want it to happen, it needs to be in a development agreement as part of the zone change.
And obviously there are infrastructure issues um with the water, the sewer, all of those kinds of things that are going to be constraints on what their project can do.
Yeah, those are handled at the project plan stage. Either they move those utilities or they move the buildings. But that, that'll be the choice of the project plan stage. Because they certainly can't build on top of those. You're right.
Okay.
Commissioner Jensen, if I, if I may, just I appreciate your way of zeroing in on what I think is really the fundamental question, you know, um, concept plans, their, their feedback, that's really what that amounts to. Um, but uh, the question about is this the appropriate zone? Um, and kind of the, the thought as well, are we maybe making it too complicated? Uh, I think that's great food for thought. I, I don't think necessarily we could easily make this too complicated. I guess really is a very complex situation. Uh, nobody gets another bite at the apple. That I'm aware of, nobody is around in the mid nineties when this was contemplated the first time. Something was awry then, I think in terms of predicting what would work. Um, and I think that uh, like I said, I mean, looking at this window that we're seeing here and asking for what's outlined to have a different zone than it currently has, I think falls short in terms of being comprehensive enough to really evaluate what this might become in the future, how it might um, support and, you know, I, I might uh be on my own in terms of really wanting to see this be a regional shopping opportunity. And I think Provo um certainly lacks for those. Um, and uh I, I could list a lot of other things that I think um uh are worthy of a lot of thought and consideration in terms of what the city might be trying to accomplish with, with the whole mall site. Um, and uh, I guess I'd add to that uh is the ITOD zone appropriate? I really think it depends. It depends on the things that we've talked about tonight. Um, everything from parking to trees, landscaping. Uh, it's been a while since I felt comfortable recommending that a project that's predominantly rental occupied, you know, product gets gets uh recommended for approval and that's a, a big concern certainly for me here as well. Um, so again, I, I think this is premature and at the same time, uh, as I think back to, to what I've maybe assumed would happen on some part of the mall site for many years, I have thought that there would be some high density housing there. I think that, that is part of the formula, but is this the right configuration, right placement and those types of things? I, I don't think we have enough information now to, to um, to thoughtfully make a recommendation on that. Uh, if you can, if, if you can quickly, you bet, yeah.
Okay, so a, as to position. This, this, and this is owned by Dillard's. This lot, this lot and this lot. This is a JCPenney and this is a JCPenney area where we have to keep housing. Seven hundred and fifty spots here, including underneath Cinemark have to be allocated for Cinemark's use. So respectfully, this is the spot for housing.
Okay.
It is the spot.
And also
that, that is the spot for housing. There's no other ifs, ands or buts about it. And if we were to sit there and say, if at some point we get possession of this building and all the subsequent lots, this is the highest opportunity we have for larger retail uses, like the grocery store that everyone keeps talking about or a mass merchandiser that everyone wants because it's the highest visibility corridor. No one wants to be up in Cinemark because every retailer said, I can't be seen. So to that point, yes, we've put a a massive amount of thought into where is the best place for housing, both given, given constraints, but also trying to lessen noise and accessibility quickly to and from the interstate and to mesh with local neighborhoods. That is the site. If we're due to housing, this is the place it has to be.
I, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thanks. And maybe to add, uh, that doesn't necessarily make me feel any more assured that this really is part of a bigger formula for success. You know, the idea that 1,200 people living in proximity to what, you know, it's not a neighborhood commercial service. It's, it's one that people typically don't use on a especially a daily or weekly basis. Um, uh, so I'm not sure that the rooftop's necessary at the end of the day or anything other than another profit center, which could be good for an owner in order to help them, you know, maybe uh maybe meet other needs and expectations that other people on the site have, but um it also could be uh ultimately closing the door on other opportunities going, going forward. So at least those are my thoughts. So that all being said, uh, I think our options tonight on both items one or two are to uh make recommendations either to uh, well, sorry, action item number one, approve or deny concept plan that could be continued as well. And then to make a recommendation on item number two uh to the city council, same options, uh, approve, deny or to continue that as, as well. Can I cut you off a minute ago? Sorry, Daniel, do you have anything else to?
No.
Sorry if I did. I don't mean to. So just, we have to move on now, but uh.
I think I'm ready to make a, a motion. Um, I'm going to move that we continue. Item number one, Scott Bowles requests concept plan approval for multifamily housing in and proposed ITOD zone located at 1,200 South Town Center Boulevard um in the East Bay neighborhood. Um, with the feedback to the applicant that the commission likes the direction of this development and want to see um more the actual concept, um also taking into account all of the utilities and other work that needs to be done so that we have a much better view of what the layout would be um on the site. Again, we like it, but it's not quite ready yet.
Okay, thank you. That was Commissioner Urquaga with a motion to continue item number one.
Um, I'll second the motion to continue.
And Commissioner Gonzalez seconded the motion. Uh, motion is again to continue item number one uh with thoughts that Commissioner Urquaga shared. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say I, does the zone fit? I think it kind of does. Um, it's, I think I, I clocked it this afternoon. It's like point six miles from the front runner. And then it's right by there by the UVX. I think, I think the zone fits. Um, but I think like, once we do approve the, the zone change, that there's some rights that are vested. And we, and like we discussed earlier, that we need some discretion. Um, in our recommendation and approval process. So uh, I think it's, I think it fits and I, I like the direction that it's going.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen.
My question for discussion is whether that's enough condition. Like Commissioner Urquaga said, that she wants it to come back with more details that take out, that take the lay of the land and the utility problems into account. Is there anything else that we would like to see come back so that we don't make the applicant come back multiple times? What are, are there any other questions we would like to add as a condition, I guess what I'm saying?
That's an excellent question, I think, so I can maybe follow up on that. And I'm going to look to staff and the applicant both. Again, for me, this is, this is really, really a big deal. For me, this is work session kind of stuff to maybe, you know, after we have a little bit more time even maybe to think things through, to try to give the applicant further refined thoughts, maybe staff do the same thing, some dialogue if it'd be possible in future weeks, hopefully sooner than later, maybe to have that kind of discussion. For me, this is a really appropriate time to maybe take a little bit of additional time to, to just have that dialogue.
Work session for July 28th, we can get with the applicant and talk a little bit and be ready to provide something, some updated information for you by July 28th, and that that would be work session. And then we'd still have some more time, maybe for the August 11th meeting to kind of refine. We'll have time in between the 28th and the 11th to refine.
For something of the scale, that's a quick pace, but if, if I can't move that fast, I think I'd love to work.
And I guess we should ask the applicant if that timeframe works for him or if he'd like to maybe, looks like he's working on it. Perhaps even a month to get to that work session might be helpful for, for the applicant.
And just to clarify, I guess, more of what I'm thinking. So I think it is hard to encapsulate, you know, even the, the most salient things that we've hinted at and have discussed tonight in a motion. I know the applicant's very capable of, I think, you know, taking productive thought from that. But still, so maybe sooner than later, it's an opportunity to have a deeper discussion about everybody's thoughts. I see value in that, maybe before the applicant's put any effort into refining anything.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It was brought up, possibility of development agreement. Do we want to add that into the conditional or the continuance that a development agreement gets started or?
The applicant has to proffer that, so we can't ask for it.
Oh, okay.
So that's just, that can just hang as an elephant over our heads, I think.
I would be happy to provide just my thought, and I think does go back to some of the things that several of us have talked about tonight, which is wanting to have a fairly high level of comfort that what we see with the zone change is what gets built. And that usually happens when there is an agreement, so.
Right.
We have a motion. Do we have any other discussion on the motion? I personally, I don't feel that we do. I, I think it's sufficient continuance and any of the other dialogue we've had just relative to staff and.
It's pretty open ended.
Yeah, yeah. That's my thought. Okay, I don't see anybody else jumping to microphone, so I can't remember if we do roll calls on these or not. Again, motion to, to continue item number one. We'll just start with you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Urquaga.
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Aye as well, so the motion carries. Then on to item number two.
I can move on that as, again. I move that we continue item number two, Scott Bowles' request, zone change from regional commercial to interim transit oriented development for approximately 21 acres located at 1,200 South Town Center Boulevard in the East Bay neighborhood. And until such time as the concept plan is ready to move forward.
Thank you. We have a motion to continue item number two. Do we have a second? Knutson, the second on the motion. Any discussion on this one? Mr. Henry, now? Okay, great. We'll go in the same order then, back to Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Urquaga.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, so item number two has been continued also. And we'll maybe anticipate next, next commission meeting work session beforehand or at some point during the meeting. Okay, great, thank you. Next couple of items are discussion items to distinct issues. And I wonder if it's helpful, maybe just to take a quick minute to talk about how we want the conversation to unfold with these two. Maybe, Mr. Mills, can you help us? And I don't know if it's, it's useful to talk about these separately, kind of in the context of what do we hope to accomplish tonight? Sure. So we can have maybe an end in mind from the beginning and.
Yes, time wise too.
That might be helpful. Thank you.
So yes, the, the next two items are for discussion. Basically, at the invitation of our council members, they have some questions for you, the planning commission. Seeking some of your thoughts and getting some feedback for you, from you, so we can take that to them. Now, this first one is going to be on some Westside policy statements and the intent statement that's before you. Basically wanting to weigh in on your feelings of this and then get a recommendation on the next steps. So this is essentially a general plan amendment. And so what would need to happen after this is if you, if you have a desire for us to bring this back as an actual amendment, then it would come before you for a recommendation to the, to the council. So this step is just discussion. And then whatever, whatever you want us to bring back to you, then you could actually make a recommendation to the council. Similar situation for item two. Again, item two is about, or not item two, but item six. Discussion regarding the Southeast Neighborhood Plan. Commissioner, excuse me, Councilmember Ellsworth has expressed concern in the past regarding the, the future land use map and just wants your expertise as a planning commission. This is where you, we want you to weigh in and if there are concerns that you have, then we can go forward with those same situation. If you have recommendations for us, we can bring those back to you at another meeting. And then you can make a formal recommendation to the council. We, for the, for this item, the Westside Policy Discussion. Hannah is prepared to make a presentation to all of you, kind of give you the overview. And then we have Jonathan Hill, who was a member of the committee that actually interpreted the original policy statements. He'll be giving you some background, kind of explaining why we got to that point. And then we have Councilmember Harding, who is actually proposing the intent statement to give you the background on where we're at now. And so, anything else I can help you with? As far as timing goes, I've invited the presenters to take about 15 minutes apiece. And then whatever questions you have, of course, for the item after this, we're just kind of discussing, getting your thoughts. So however that long would take. Hopefully, we can do it as expeditiously as possible.
Yes, it's up to us at that point.
Yeah, I'm already in trouble with Rachel that we're having these after the regular items. So just keep that in mind, but any expediency would put me back in good graces.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. So then, let's just go ahead and dive right into, I think it's item number three.
Four technically, but.
Is it four? How does it, okay. Help me.
Three was removed.
Oh, is that how it ended up that way?
Yes, it's 1246 for, good at counting here. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, item number four.
Okay, I will keep my part especially brief, essentially just going over our existing plans, bringing you up to speed on where we're at now and what the intent statement is proposing and overview the process. The land use intent statement purpose is threefold, as it states, to clarify the council's intent, to clarify some ambiguities and introduce some, some new framework and to get everyone on the same page in this meeting. As Robert said, this is essentially like a work session discussion, not a public hearing that will come later. Just making sure you understand everything going on as we take the next steps. Just want to highlight that we will rely, that very last point, we will rely as staff on your input for proposed revisions. As we move forward, we are open to this negotiation process. We understand with residents and this has been a process years in the making. We want to make sure that everyone's voice is heard. Brief, brief overview there is on the screen. I won't go through it. Like I said, this has been the process for five years or so. There was the Westside Planning Committee that then created the Westside Development Policies that the council adopted. Year later, the Future Land Use Map was created. We'll have slides to go more in depth. And then in June, on the June 15th meeting, for those who want to go back and watch that video, Councillor Harding recommended that the council adopt this Future Land Use Intent Statement for the Southwest area of Provo. And they recommended sending it to you. Our existing policies, there's the Westside Development, which breaks down into seven different categories and those all have subpoints. All of these documents should also be at the top of your inboxes if you want a quick refresher. Point three is really the focus of the intent statement to encourage sustainable residential development patterns. There's the Future Land Use Map briefly summarized here. I'm going to go to the next page where I have it slightly larger. To my understanding, council would prefer the map not be changed. If there is a conflict between the development policies and the map, then the amendment should be to the development policies. This map represents a lot of compromise. The Proposed Land Use Intent Statement, getting into that now. As I said, its intent is to reaffirm the council's intent to implement the Westside Development Policies. Add some clarity to that. It also calls on the planning commission for assistance in drafting ordinances to accomplish developed policy 3A. Policy 3 is that one I highlighted on the last slide. Density touches on overall density should be four units per acre gross, which is a change from the net, which really did calculate out to about 2.8 units per acre, so gross will increase density. It also states that residential developments should be kept below four units gross. Development patterns, it says that policy three subsections A through D, which are on the next slide, should apply to all residential developments except for the mixed use village center and infill areas. And then it gives some examples breaking down for residential LDR developments, how they might accomplish that. I won't linger on this slide. A through D are the ones specifically mentioned in the intent statement. ENF are just there for context and reference. We can go back to this slide if you need it. The intent statement attempts to clarify some ambiguities. I mentioned all of these on the page summarizing the intent statement, but specifically looking at units per acre where that applies gross. But other ambiguities could be interpreted in the text. And as we're moving forward in this process, if you see any, please let staff know, we'll keep our eyes open too. But this is our opportunity to really make sure this is clear for everyone and get us all on the same page. So that checks off essentially the purpose of my part of the presentation, which was to brief you on those four bullet points there, the policies, the land use map issues and the intent statement. Moving forward, it's recommended the planning commission hold at least one public hearing and that they then make their recommendation to council, who will then also hold a public hearing. Do you have any questions for me? Yeah.
What is the mixed use village center that you said that it wouldn't apply to?
That is back on the land use map. I don't know if you can see that red lop up at the top there. Just a, exactly what it says, a mixed use sort of a village hub sort of idea in that area.
Okay, so it's not a specific project. It's an area that they would like to see something.
Yes, okay, at this point.
That's the area that we were talking about, a Kroger store, right, at one point? Okay.
So that, that's the intersection of Geneva Road and South.
Okay.
If there are no further questions, I believe my portion is done, but I will be here and you have those documents in your inbox if you need any references.
That was not 15 minutes. No complaint.
I could describe the land use map and interpretive dance to fill my remaining few minutes, if we've got time.
You could maybe.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you guys about what we tried to do as a land use map committee. My name's Jonathan Hill. I was a member of that committee. I was representing, kind of, as, working as a neighborhood chair. I'm the Fort Newton Neighborhood Chair as well. But my role tonight will specifically be as a committee member and talking about what we did there, how we interpreted some of the policies that we've heard about and really tried to create that compromise in order to implement the policies in a way that was really workable. You know, I really liked Brian Henry's example earlier of the concept car, right? We felt like the Westside policies were aspirational. They were high level. They were somewhat abstract. And our job was to be the engineers that make that actually work and function, right? And so that's what we tried to accomplish here. And I'm going to kind of quickly go through this, but I'm happy to expand and answer any questions you guys have. And actually, I just pulled this slide out from a deck we used when we presented this to the, to the neighborhood to get their support. Because one of the things we wanted to emphasize to them, and I want to emphasize to you tonight, is that there are many different considerations that all have to be taken into account here, right? We have the farmers who are no longer farming. They want to develop their land. They want to, of course, get the maximum value out of it. Some of them want to continue as well. We want to be able to respect that. We have different stages of life, different family types. And we also have other concerns about infrastructure out in the area, especially sewage and road infrastructure. And also, of course, we've got the airport out there that needed to be taken into account as well. And so what we did, what the staff did to address all of these different concerns, is they created a land use committee that had representatives from as many of these different groups as we could get. We had landowners in the area. We had developers. We had planning commission members. We had neighborhood chairs and assistant neighborhood chair. We had representatives of other parts of town. We had a city council member, right? We tried to bring all the groups together and talk these out. How do we actually implement these? And this was not a quick process either. We met over a series of months with regular discussions. We had support from staff, so we would ask them questions. We would ask for data or information. They would bring it back to us and we really tried to, to work this out. But our goal was really simple. We had to interpret and implement the Westside policies in a practical way that met the needs of all of these stakeholders. And so interpretations were made, certain ones were emphasized over others, compromises were made, right? But in the end, I think we created a very workable product that has done what we wanted it to do. And so I just want to quickly highlight some things that we talked about that did not get in there, just to show how thorough we were. There was a proposal for agri neighborhoods, which is a pocket neighborhood kind of concept based around the idea of having common garden spaces. This is an early version of the map that had that in a large area here. Eventually, though, we were concerned, you know, would there be a market for it? What happens to these agri neighborhoods if people stop gardening? And, and there became some concerns there. And so we decided against that kind of level of detail. Someone could do an agri neighborhood. There's nothing stopping them, but we didn't want to dictate it. We also talked about transferable building rights. This was an idea to help preserve agriculture by allowing the, the landowners there to sell the development rights to other areas so that they could do a higher density. Some places have tried this around the country. Again, we became concerned about how do you implement that legally and what happens 50 years down the road when now there's a need for housing in Provo and they see these open fields and they're like, we want to build there, but the rights have been sold and you can't develop it anymore, right? And so we were worried about the long term consequences there. We also looked at some kind of redevelopment options, including maybe kind of a San Antonio style Riverwalk in the area. Again, the city had already purchased this land. They were building a park there. And so we felt like a lot of what we wanted to achieve was already being done. And again, maybe we don't want to go to that level of kind of micromanagement here. So in the end, we did get the map that has been shown to you. And I just want to go through some of the key features. I'm not going to go through all of them and I'm not going to go through all of the Westside policies. and I'm not going to go through all of the West Side policies, but just some key features and how they meet those policies. The first one is that policy one says that we need to preserve Provo's agricultural heritage and support agriculture for as long as the farmers choose to farm. With this, the staff did a survey of landowners in the area and asked them simply, you know, 10 years out, do you expect to still be farming, are you looking to develop your land? And so the area is designated as A110 in this area. Some of the residential agriculture spots, et cetera, were designated as such because of the survey results, right? Now that may change, farmers may, you know, economic situations change, et cetera, they may change to do do something else. But we did our best to kind of predict what would actually happen going forward. The other one was to preserve and create quality usable space, so you will see throughout here, we designated bike trails. I know I saw Lisa had a bike helmet when she came in, so I'm also a bike commuter, I appreciate that. We tried to make sure that the bike trails tied in and especially when into the middle section here. We didn't have any kind of large areas devoid of trails. We also looked at Dry Creek, preserving some trail here and then some kind of trailheads and parks along the river itself. The next one, the one that is really the focus of this intense statement is to require a mix of housing types. The part I cut off said, create ordinances that require a mix of housing types, lot sizes and designs to accommodate various stages of life. And so we kind of did that on on two different levels here. The first level is you will see that we do have what we call residential, which would be at least a majority, almost all we expected, single family detached housing types in these area. These are actually, just a clarification for what Hannah said, these are the areas that are actually designated as four units per acre net. She mentioned that comes out to about 2.8 units per acre gross. That was necessary because in order to get four units per acre gross over the whole area, we needed some areas below that number, right? We have LDR zones and an MDR zone, which are higher density. And so to balance that out, we needed areas that were lower so that the average across the entire area would be four, okay? We also did it on a higher scale, if you zoom in on the legend here that's associated with the map, we have three numbered areas here, one is this kind of redevelopment slash mixed use area up here. And then a couple areas down here, the other one's kind of tucked behind here. Oh, no, right here, it is showing. These areas, we wanted to designate actually a fine grained kind of mix within those particular pockets. We had received feedback that when you mix housing types, really is better to do it something higher than four units per acre. Because most of those alternate types are higher density housing types, right? Townhomes, bungalows, styles, grouped driveways, et cetera. And so we thought, let's take these areas where we have a mixture of LDR, some commercial and residential, all closely associated, and let's make those the mixed areas. And then, of course, we've got the broader view that it's mixed over the whole area as well. We don't have one housing type throughout the entire area. And then the last one is that we created a robust transportation network. And we did that by designating the key corridors through this area. And this was something very important to me as a member of the committee, because I work at BYU. So every day I come down 820 and then I see how 820 ends at Geneva, right? And there is no continuing corridor to the west. And yet imagine how nice that would be to have a corridor through there that went to the high school that kind of connected over to this area. And we just don't have that opportunity anymore. So we wanted to make sure that didn't happen again, that we preserve these key corridors, but then left flexibility to the developers within these areas on how, what's the best way to lay out streets within those areas. I think another thing that's important here is as we discuss transportation, we started looking at existing traffic issues in the built out areas and how we might create a public transportation corridor in here as well. And so we focused on Center Street, that is the most kind of vulnerable traffic corridor that we have in the area. The traffic studies from way back in the 2010 Traffic Master Plan showed that we had to keep development particularly low, I can actually show you the numbers if you're interested around this corridor, or we would overload this road, which would require it to be widened, which of course requires eminent domain, taking out houses that exist along it. And we thought, let's try to avoid that. And so in contrast to that, we had Lakeview Parkway, it's designed to be a nice four lane road, high traffic loads, connects the airport to downtown. And we were told at the time that there was discussions about one day, taking UVX and extending it down here and coming out to the airport as another destination. So we thought, let's push some of our density down along this corridor so that we can have the density that you need along a transportation corridor, make it viable, right? I've looked at many traffic studies over the last few years from different cities. And typically, they say 10 to 14 units per acre is necessary along a transportation corridor to make bus transportation viable. So we wanted to make sure we had that along this proposed bus route. So then after we created this with all of the kind of compromises and decisions that we made, we got community support. We held two Southwest area meetings, one was kind of halfway through the process. Me and Beth Olagud and a couple other people presented at that meeting, got feedback. Changes were made in response to that feedback, and then we held another meeting at the end of the process where city staff presented and really talked about what would be done. Now, it was interesting to me, the biggest concern, and really honestly, some accusations were made, that we were going to pull some sort of bait and switch on everybody, that we were going to just not be committed to the actual plan, the second a developer came or some sort of other interest came in, we would just throw it all out and do what they wanted anyway. And so we had to spend a lot of time getting the confidence of my neighbors that we would actually stick to this plan and defend the plan. And the neighborhood liked the map and it really helped ameliorate some of these concerns because it created something concrete that they could see and understand and point to to say, hey, this is what you promised us, right? I think one of the strengths of it is that it is simple and understandable to anyone, builders, neighbors, whoever. And so that really helped it, in fact, it has changed how neighborhood meetings run in my area. We've had several developments come through, you guys keep hearing me on the phone because we keep having developments come through. And what we do is we just show the map and say, hey, here's what's in the map. And then if the developer meets it, the neighborhood will support it and actually support it quite strongly in those cases. And if they don't, they point to the map and say, this isn't what we were promised. And it makes it very much more black and white for everybody. In fact, I want to show some examples of the effects of this map. And really, the bottom line is that developers have followed it. And so there's four major projects that have come through and within the Southwest area since the plan, the map's adoption. And all of them have at least attempted to follow this and it really has been a guiding document for them. So here's one, the Osprey Towns Development that I believe was approved. It is a town home development, you can see there's three different kind of styles of townhomes within here, they have some public spaces. And it fits in an area on the map that was specifically designated as an LDR zone. We have some that are incorporating more of that mixture idea. Here is a note, you guys have seen, this has been continued and they are working on refinements to it. But you can see that they are at least attempting to meet what the map shows. Here we had labeled neighborhood mixed use, this is again along Lakeview Parkway with some LDR and some residential. And you can see they designated a commercial area, they put in some LDR housing types and they put in some single family detached housing types. The only place where they got in trouble is they tried to do a transferal of development rights kind of thing by saying, let's count 86 lots from the neighboring area to get our density down where it needs to be. And so it got sent back saying, no, you can't do that. You need to follow what the map says, again, the map was the guiding document in that case. Couple from my neighborhood to finish up here. Here is a development that is on the very far western edge of Center Street, this is Center Street running here. If you could see right here, this is the Marina, so we're way out at the end, these are the storage units, if you've been out there, that have all the crazy gas station signs posted everywhere. In the map, it was designated as residential, which again was going to be that four units net. We again did that to balance out other areas. And then south of Center Street is part of the airport protection zone and you can't build residential, you need to have some sort of light industrial or commercial type. And you can see that's exactly what they proposed was light industrial types south of Center Street and then a single family detached residential area. Now, I think this one's also interesting because they actually did say, we're going to meet the overall density, but we're going to do it a little bit different. They dedicated open space for a trail along the river. And then they have slightly smaller, probably 6,000 to 8,000 square foot lots within this area. So it's kind of more of a clustered design, but the overall density came out pretty close to what it needed to be. And then finally, one that you've seen very recently that came through here. It was unanimously supported by Planning Commission, although it's been continued as well to allow these discussions that we're having now to occur. In fact, I remember Dave specifically said that this was an easy plan to support here. And it has larger, more expensive, single family detached lots. You don't see it on here, but they are also preserving trail space here and trail space here to tie into a park that is going to be built right here and was designated as such on the map. We actually put the park on the other side, but with the Delta Project, they're going to put it right here, which I think is perfectly good. So you can see that, again, this really has been an effective document in creating a mixture of housing types across the area and really helping development occur, but in a way that follows a clear plan that we have. And just to show the kind of of patchwork that I think it results in, here is the Fort Utah neighborhood, this is my neighborhood. And as you can see, each color here is a different kind of housing type, the warmer the color, the closer to red, the more high density it is, the more close to purple, the lower the density is. These are in fact RA lots, these are A1 lots here. And these are all all the kind of, you know, warmer than green kind of colors, red, orange and yellow, are all multifamily attached type housing types, whereas the more blue colors are different types of single family detached housing types at different densities, at different price points, at different kind of configurations. And so throughout the area, we do get a mixture of housing type. I think one goal of the intent statement is to make that more fine grained. And so that's a discussion we need to have, is what kind of scale does that mixture need to be on? Is within a neighborhood, having everything from mobile home apartments, townhomes, down to residential agriculture, is that enough of a mix or do we need more of a mix than that? So finally, just to sum up here, the land use map, I think, is an effective tool for guiding development in Southwest Provo. Kind of toes that line between directing good development and not micromanaging so much that we actually suppress developers, right? And suppress development where they're like, I'm going to go somewhere else. It meets the needs of many different stakeholders, land use or landowners, neighbors, residents, developers. Everybody gets what they need here, creates a strong mixture of housing and distributes it efficiently along transportation corridors. And in a way that creates not only different housing types, but different neighborhood styles as well. And I think this is the most important is right now, I believe it's very simple and understandable by both residents and developers, and that's why we're seeing everything coming through, at least getting really close to following what this plan says. So with that, I'll take any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I'm going to go first, that's right. Can you give me a quick summary of the the interpretation? Like maybe just some of the specifics that are going to maybe make this easier to implement?
You're saying the intent statement or?
So there's this, is that?
That's the intent statement, right? Yes.
Got it, so this is the product of what you're talking about, of the efforts?
So that is a proposal by Mr. Harding, I believe he'll talk about it here in a second to clarify or modify slightly what the land use map was trying to achieve.
Okay. So then, totally admitting that I'm proving my ignorance here, that's no shame. So you've just been describing the plan and kind of its current condition and how you see it from your perspective, working to serve the area. And that sort of thing.
Right, yes, as a as a member of the committee that created the map, essentially.
Thank you, not necessarily talking about any proposed changes or?
No, this is the current state, how the land use map is viewed right now without without an intent statement. If that makes sense.
Got it, so the, I won't say intent of the intent statement, but the idea of the conversation tonight is to discuss that in terms of just further refinement, going from having an area planned to looking at zone changes and that type of thing?
I think I think the the purpose of this discussion tonight is to determine if the Planning Commission feels like this intent statement that Mr. Harding has proposed provides additional clarification, is necessary for the original policy statements that were developed and the Southwest Area Future Land Use Map that resulted because of that. Like, are there ambiguities that we feel should be explored and refined, things like that?
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think one of the key questions in there is what is that granularity of the mix? The intent statement wants to create a much more fine grained mix where you have apartments and townhomes, not mostly along Lakeview Parkway, but spread throughout the entire area.
With the idea that still, like we see on the bubble plan, there are some target units per acre types of things that are are intended still to be maintained.
Yeah, and the four units won't change, so every time you're creating a an attached housing type, you would have to subtract as an unattached type, right? A detached type to get that, so the total number of units won't change, just the mixture. In fact, if you don't mind, I forgot to mention this. Here is the mixture that it creates right here. So there's 4,000 units residential, that's because of there's 996 acres, four units per acre gross comes out to about that, right? So we tried to hit that target, 3,984, 4,000 type, we got there. And you do that by taking your different densities and what you expected to be developed at, you get the number of homes of each type within there. And I think one key thing here is if you take attached MDR and LDR and you take your detached R1 RA, there's actually slightly more attached, it's pretty much 50 50 between attached and detached on a number of unit spaces, on a number of acres basis, there's far more detached housing expected in the area, but as far as number of units, it's one to one, essentially.
I know from previous conversations that there is kind of a hard ceiling, at least in terms of expectation as to the number of homes that would be built in the area. Can we talk more about that for just a second, is that is that?
Yeah, so I can just tell you what we were told as a committee and that was mainly came down to sewer. Power said, we can get power out there, that's totally fine. In sewage, they are building a lift station because this, almost this entire area is lower in elevation than our sewage treatment plant in the city. They thought about moving the treatment plant out here, but they decided finally just to create a lift station, which is basically a big pump for sewage, run some trunk lines that go from there, it's right here across from the regional park next to the airport, run them up to the sewage plant. And so they had to know what is the capacity we're going to build that lift station to. And so during the West Side Planning Process before I joined, it was decided that it would be four units per acre out here. And then they've designed and they are building that sewage station to that capacity. So.
Okay, quick follow up on that. I don't know, it's not just about infrastructure, I assume it's not at least. With the construction of that lift station, does that potentially accommodate the construction of more additional homes than what we're seeing on this plan or? Just roughly, not not looking for a number, but maybe.
That's a wonderful Mr. Day question.
I guess that's for me, right?
Probably.
I commend you on your backgrounds on, they look really authentic. Coming out of, coming out of Zoom. Sorry. I digressed, but so yeah, the the infrastructure on the west side for years and years was based on a four units per acre. And when the West Side Plan, Southwest Area was being developed, that was discussed. It was settled that, yeah, that's still a good number. In public works, we merely took the whole west side and said, okay, how many acres? How many units does that come out to? The water sewer is all designed for that capacity. It it doesn't matter a whole lot where the densities are, as long as we don't exceed that number, we'll have the ability to serve both water and sewer to that area. So if if there was a an idea that you cluster different densities, kind of like the map shows, that works fine.
It all gets to the same spot.
Yeah.
And that's where.
Yeah, we just size the mains that go to the lift station, the lift station can. Yeah. We just, uh, size the mains that go to the lift station. The lift station can handle it to kick it back over across the freeway.
So the lift station was designed to the four homes.
It was, um, that, that new lift station, just for your information, is a kind of a regional lift station. We're eliminating five lift stations and replacing it with that one lift station. So it, it ends up being a considerable operation maintenance cost reduction. So over time, the new lift station in a way will kind of pay for itself. And, uh, the reduced costs that we were incurring on the multiple lift stations.
How far along is that?
Uh, so, so a lift station costs about $200,000 to run per year.
Meaning in terms of its construction, is it like being designed now?
Yeah, that, so the, so the new lift station's about two million.
Okay.
But you get five lift stations and probably over about 10 years where the, the reduction in operation and maintenance of those five stations will pay for the new lift station.
And I'm asking timing. Yeah.
Yeah, it is. You can go out there and you can see him working on it. It has to be, uh, fully operational in about a year from now. So, uh, that it can open with the new regional sports park.
Got it.
So.
Okay. So 40 to the acre is a hard ceiling, if that's all the.
It is. I, I, I think we could probably analyze that in further, but we would still come back to the point where we have the trunk lines that cross underneath the freeway. And those are sized to, uh, the capacity of what four units per acre would provide.
Okay.
So it's really those, those big main lines that connect across underneath the freeway that, that kind of control that.
More so than the, than the station itself.
Yeah.
That makes sense. You could put in a bigger pump maybe or something, but you can't.
And to, to replace all that is, you know, an exponentially larger cost. So it, you know, if you wanted to pay millions and millions of dollars, we could up that, but kind of the consensus in the committee was no, we don't want to like rebuild every bit of infrastructure to be able to jump it up to five units per acre.
Well, I think that's a lot of property tax, right?
Yeah.
It, yeah. How do you tell them? You're not, you're not going to get the density you need to pay for that.
Yeah. Is that?
Yeah. Thank you.
Too much.
For me, that really clarifies just exactly how definitive this plan then becomes. It's, it's just a question of how you, you arrange a number of homes. It's not a question of what that number might ultimately be if you're efficiently using the capacity. So, so that's.
Yeah.
That's helpful for me. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Robert.
So on the, uh, mixed use, it's going to be essentially clustered in certain areas, right? So if I decided that I wanted to take five acres of my farm and put it into single family housing, would I be required by the city to, that I had to put some condos in there rather than single-family housing?
Well, okay. So now you're asking complicated question. I don't know if I want to answer this too much before Dave can present, but, um, the intent statement would, would require it. Um, it says that any development over, well, you said five acres, five acres would be fine. Anything over 10 acres, then you would have to have a mixture of different housing types. Most likely, although not, it's not required, required. It would have to be, uh, some sort of attached housing type, just because most alternate types are, right? Um, you've got like one type of detached housing type, and then you've got 10 types of attached housing types. And so that's what the intent statement would say is we don't want these large areas to just be single-family detached housing. We want some other types mixed in there as well. Is that fair to say, Dave? Yes, Dave will clarify. So. Okay. Any other questions?
I kind of feel like it's a good time to jump in.
Yeah, I think we need to hear his.
Yeah. It's starting. Yeah, that was a, that was a big chunk of 15 minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak with you. I appreciate, uh, your time tonight. I will start my timer. Uh, and try to keep it to the 15 minutes. Um, also I appreciated, uh, Jerry Anderson, your questions and hopefully, um, as I go through, I'll try to emphasize a little bit, kind of the, in different stages and the different documents. Hopefully that will help as well. Okay. West Side Policy Statements, I think, is the title of the, the item. And I put from the perspective of Dave Harding, um, I want to make it very clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of the council. Um, I am speaking, um, on, on my behalf and I, I'll be a little careful when I try to, um, characterize the, the discussions in some of these committees because different committee members will probably have different recollections and, and whatnot. So, so really I'm, I'm, I'm taking responsibility. You know, this is from my own perspective. Um, and then is this? Nice. Thank you. All right. Um, so from my involvement, um, September, uh, 2016 through 2017, I chaired the West Side Planning Committee. Okay. So this was kind of the first committee that was assembled to try to hash out, how do we want West Provo to develop as this comes? We, we worked on different Paul, different principles and whatnot. Um, and then I was tasked by the rest of the committee to be the primary author of the, the West Side Development Policy. So that's one document. It's a document, development policies for, for West Provo. Um, and, uh, in 2017, um, I was also on the, the city council, so I voted, uh, with the unanimous city council to adopt uh, these West Side Development Policies. Should also say that committee, I don't remember exactly, but 25, 30, uh, members of this committee, very broad, uh, different community leaders. Uh, probably I'd say at least half were, were residents of, of West Provo. Um, and so we had a very broad group, very broad interests. And so there was a lot of compromise, but um, that committee unanimously recommended it to the city council. The city council unanimously, um, adopted it. Um, fast forward, uh, a year and a half, I was on the city council when we unanimously adopted the Southwest Area Future Land Use Map. And that's what, uh, Mr. Hill was just talking about. So a second committee was, was formed. They took these policies. They tried to, to turn it into a map. Um, at that time we were also, um, the idea was that the Southwest Area, um, master plan was in the works as well. That still has not been completed. The idea was that was going to put the, the kind of the text to that map. The map was fairly high level. Um, but probably a little bit lower level than the policy documents that came before it. Um, but we had, we haven't, uh, gotten to that point yet. So since November 2018, I've continued to be on the council and I have reluctantly voted to approve the zone change requests that have come through. Um, each time I've said, oh, this doesn't have a mixture of housing types. And each time I was told, well, they put in their application before the future land use map was adopted. Uh, so it's, it's been in process and wasn't happy with that, but I felt to be fair to the developers, I went ahead and voted for that. But every time I said, you know, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not happy with this and I'm not going to be voting for these when, when they're, um, you know, if, if they were put in after that land use map was, was adopted. Um, and so, um, finally, I don't know, was it May or June of this year? Finally, we got through the last one that was, that had been applied, or at least they had talked to the city before the land, the future land use map was adopted. And so the very next one, um, staff said, well, I know there's some concerns on the council. You probably want to reach out. So they asked the developer to reach out to me. And, uh, I, maybe I'm telling the story out of order here. Um, anyway, so, so now we've, we've hit the point where the, the development, the land, the rezone requests have come into the city after this future land use map, um, was, was adopted. And I remember the point I was trying to make. Maybe I wasn't listening well enough, but I didn't feel like there was ever someone saying, well, this doesn't have a mixture of housing types because that's not really what the map says. It was always, well, we don't, we're not applying the map because that, this came in before that. And so once now the map, no question applies and the policies, no question apply to these, these, uh, requests that are coming in. Now there's a question of, oh, well, it says for a mixture of housing types, but it doesn't say at what scale it was, you know, that is. And so, you know, is it, is it okay just to have different housing types on different ends of the map? Is that good enough? And, and so this was kind of, at least to me, that was a, an eye opener because I, you know, I was under the impression that a mixture of housing types meant throughout. And so, um, but, but I agree, you know, and we'll, we'll look at a little bit closer, but I agree that a reasonable person can read the map and read the policies and say, okay, well, yeah, maybe this applies globally across the entire area. Um, and, and I think a reasonable person can read that and say, oh, yeah, a mixture of housing type that's required needs to be more fine-grained than that. So, so I think that's kind of the question before you is, at what level should this mixture of housing types be applied? And I just feel like it's not clear enough, or at least, um, you know, the, the, the developments that have been coming through, um, have, there's been that question. And so, so as a council member, I said, I think we need to make clear what our intentions are. Um, because I think either interpretation could be supported by these documents. We need to make that decision. It's just so it's clear for everyone. Um, so. Uh, quickly, my background, I am not a planner. Um, I have a PhD in, I'm a scientist and an engineer. Um, I'm not a planner. Uh, but, uh, ever since I moved to Provo, I've been involved in my neighborhood, assistant neighborhood chair, vice chair, chair. And I have really learned that the built environment impacts the health of our community. And obviously you guys know that. That's why you're on the Planning Commission. Um, and I think it was my very first, uh, work meeting after being, um, uh, after being elected to the, the city council, um, I was speaking probably a little too passionately about, um, about the form of development and, and the impact that it has. And one of the, one of the, uh, planners, after I finished, he, he looked at me and said, you know, out loud to everyone in this public meeting, like, are you a closet planner? Which I, I laughed, but, but also took it as a, as a, as a compliment. I, it's something that I'm kind of passionate about because I, I do think it has such an, an important impact on, on the community. Um, 2015, it was, I was elected, but I was not on the council yet. Provo had a zoning summit. I don't know if any of you were able to attend that, but, um, there's kind of the, the program from it. Um, we had developers, we had professors of, of urban planning. Uh, we had, uh, Envision Utah there. We had, I mean, authors, national authors, uh, local developers. Uh, it was, it was an amazing, um, summit. And that's really was very formative to me and really helped shape my views of land use and kind of set some ideals for me that I've been trying to work towards on the council for these past six years. And I, I was reviewing this for this presentation, just looking back at some of these form-based code slides and thinking, you know, kind of, I don't feel like I've wasted the last six years because we still don't have it really much form-based code in, in Provo. And I wish we were further along with that, but. Um, so, so I went through it, just a couple, a couple of slides. Um, this was from Envision Utah. 82% of the people that they surveyed, uh, selected scenario in which communities are designed around walking, transit, short drives and diverse housing, which they define as single-family homes on a variety of lot sizes, townhomes, apartments, condominiums, mother-in-law apartments, et cetera. Down here, we've got 6% wanted high density in one area and low density in other areas. Uh, it kind of gets us to the missing middle. Hopefully all of you have seen this slide probably before this, this graphic, but we have, um, a lot of single-family detached homes. We have a lot of mid-rises in, in kind of the downtown Provo area. And I would say we do have one of the housing types in this so-called missing middle, uh, in Provo. We do have a lot of townhomes. Um, but I think there's a whole lot more there, but what we're getting is, is primarily these three housing types. Um, this slide, when I saw that, I mean, it, it had a big impact on me. To me, this really resonated with me. This is the kind of community, um, that I want to live in. This is the kind of community that I think is, is vibrant, is robust, is, um, is sustainable from the perspective of you don't get waves of, of demographics. Um, you know, rotating through or whatever. It, it starts out fundamentally strong. And, you know, it, it shows a whole bunch of different types, housing types, all within a single block. And again, this is very formative for me because I don't, I didn't have training outside of this. This was really my, kind of my first taste of land use instruction. So, um, fast forward a few years, we, we were talking about how do we want West Provo to develop? This slide I showed, I presented to the rest of the committee as, as we talked about this. These are the, the policies. This is under three, which is one of the seven. These are the policies that, that we came together unanimously, unanimously and, and adopted. And, you know, uh, required subordinates is to require a, a mix of housing types, lot sizes and designs to accommodate various stages of life. Uh, detached, single-family homes. I'm not going to read the whole thing for you and I'm taking too much time. I apologize. C, housing types should be mixed without barriers separating types of densities. We've all seen, uh, developments where, um, someone comes in and they build development X and they put a big wall around it and development X is all of one type. And then next to development X is development Y. And, you know, they, they went with a slightly different either type or a slightly different style. And, and there's the walls between it. And, and we've got these communities that are segregated and, and, you know, diversity in the housing, the, the graphic there, you know, there, there's not walls between developments. It's, it's integrated. So, um, but you don't, you, two housing types on opposite sides of a map is not a mixture. And you don't have to talk about barriers if, if you're, if you're talking about physically separating two different housing types. Um, so 18 months later, we get this map that, that I really appreciate Mr. Hill's description of kind of how they went through it or whatnot. Um, you've seen items come to you, you, you get them, um, you, you know, the weekend before, whatever, the week before the weekend and, 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 uh, anyway, uh, this came back, I looked at it and tried to wrap my head around it and voted on it. Um, it is a future land use map. It's not a zoning map. Um, there are areas that are designated commercial, residential, which are kind of more of the land uses. Um, but there are also, you know, LDR, MDR, RA, A110, which are actually zoning or actually zone designations, not necessarily future land or land use, um, designations. Uh, for me, reading this, I figured, okay, well, LDR is, is a zone, but it's a zone that allows, doesn't require, but allows a mixture of housing. It can, it can, it can have a lot of different things. It can have single-family detachment. It can have different things. So they could put LDR on there because it, it allows for a, a, a range. But on the map, nowhere does it say, because R1 only allows single-family detached. And so to me, reading this, I said, okay, this residential, this residential, it's not R1 because it's not intended to be R1. It's intended to be, allow for a mixture of, of housing types. Um, and I, I, in the discussion, fully understood that, that we were talking about four units to the acre and I fully supported that. But I, I, I voted on it because I understood that that allowed for a mixture of housing types because they did not put R1 on it where they put, uh, LDR and MDR in other areas.
Yes.
I do have a question.
As we, um, because we come, we have projects that come through and they want R110 or R18. Um, and there doesn't seem to be an R-mixed. Is that your point?
Uh, that, that is one point. Um, I don't know if, if you guys paid any attention to the budget discussions we had, but I pushed for planning to get more resources. We've, um, asked, I'd say for years now for a zone that not, we don't even have zones that really accommodate. Well, we do, LDR, MDR, those accommodate a mixture. But we don't have a zone that really kind of dictates or requires a mixture of housing. And we've asked for that for a long time and it just, it hasn't happened yet. I think it's still in the works, still in the works. Um, but y- you're correct. We don't have that right now. And that's actually one of the requests of this intent statement. Okay. So what this comes down to is the status quo. If we don't do anything, this is what we're going to get. And, and you saw these slides presented earlier as shown as, well, this is, this is what the, the, you know, this is what we get from, from the map. And again, I disagree with what the map says. I think the map should allow for a, a fine-grained mixture of housing. But this is what's happening now. And if we don't do anything. should allow for a, a fine-grained mixture of housing, but this is what's happening now. And if we don't do anything, this is what we're going to get. And if we're okay with that, and that, that's, that's your prerogative, how you want to recommend on this. But we're getting developments in one area that is solely single family detached, lots all about the same size. There is some variation there, but that's just accommodate the, the, the topography. That is not, you know, trying to get a, a mixture of housing. That's what we're getting. And then on the other side, this is what we're getting in the LDR areas. LDR allows for single family detached. It allows for twin homes. It allows for a lot of different things. Does it allow for duplexes? Not sure if it allows for duplexes or not. It does, it does. It allows for duplexes. But what do we get? We get the maximum. We get the maximum, which is townhomes. And hey, it's a mixture because we have three different styles of townhomes. That's what we're getting. So if, if we're okay with the status quo, if we're okay with this, then we don't need to do anything. You guys can recommend the, the, the council not address this and we can go on. And this is how West Provo will be, be built. That's one thing we can do. The other thing we can do is we can clarify and say, no, we need a mixture of, of more fine-grained mixture of housing types. So I showed this, this, uh, graphic and, you know, I'm, I'm loving this graphic, but a lot of people in that committee, a lot of people live in, in West Provo because they like the less density and they're looking at that and they're like, that's way too dense. And I didn't have a graphic to show what four units to the acre would look like. Let me pause really quick here. Um, earlier it was said that, that the, that the intensity was changing what the four acres is. And that's probably my fault. I, I get confused between the net and the gross or whatever. My intent on that, we have developers coming in already and they're saying, oh, well, we, we're proposing this and it's not, it doesn't match that four units to the acre. I wanted to, if we're, if we're clarifying stuff, I wanted to reiterate, we are committed to that four units to the acre gross across the whole area. And in the areas of lower density, four units in the acre net, which is the, the two-point-eight or whatever. All, all I wanted to do with that, all it's doing is reiterating, we're committed to that. Don't come to us with proposals for something else. We're committed to that. So that's all that's for. It's not changing anything. So that is what I think the LDR areas could look like. And, but I didn't have a graphic to show what does a mixture of housing types look like in that four units? Net, whatever. The, the, the lower, the less dense area. Um, the, so, um, staff asked that developer, the new developer, that the, the one that we haven't approved yet to, to, to talk with me. I talked with him a few times. He said, let's go out to Vineyard. I've built a bunch of stuff out there. We went out to Vineyard. He showed me a bunch of different things. And, and we talked about it and I tried to explain, this is what I understand the map and the policies to be. He came back and this is what he proposed. Okay. What we have here, if I have got the, I don't know, we, we've got some clustered homes. Basically, single family detached, but it was shared driveways, smaller, smaller yards. We've got, I think, ten, no, we've got eight and six. We have fourteen clustered homes and we have four properties which would have a mansion home on it. That mansion home um, looks like a single family detached. You go in through the one main front door and inside of there, there's kind of a, I don't know, foyer that breaks off into what the, what the developer proposed was a threeplex. So you would go in and you would have three units off of that. From the outside, it looks like a single family detached, but it's a way to integrate different housing types. And, and so that's when I said, I'll clarify a little bit. So we've got, uh, three times four, so twelve of these, of these mansion home units and then four to fourteen, fourteen of these clustered homes. Those clustered homes are still family, single family detached, but they're a different housing type, even though they're single family detached. And, and we've got some properties up there that are larger because as, as Jonathan pointed out, if you, if you combine two houses, you've got to drop off one elsewhere. And so we're not, we're not densifying, we're just, we're creating some larger lots and some larger, and some smaller lots. Um, yeah. And, and again, I'm hoping the LDR could develop something more similar to that graphic rather than what we were seeing before. The intent statement kind of has two areas that, that, well, yeah. Um, let me just point out, I don't know if I've got a laser marker, but the, the third point there, no, fourth point there. The council requests the administrative staff and planning commission to develop recommendations for guidelines and ordinances to address the, the, the three previous aspects. Just looking for the, the, um, mixture of housing type in every development. I just wanted to point out here, so we're not necessarily, my understanding is the council hasn't asked you to, to come up with these recommendations. They're just asking, is this, is this intent statement something that we should, should pass? And so I think very quickly you could decide, is this roughly what we want to do? It comes back to us if the council decides to adopt it. The first thing that happens is we come back to you and say, okay, please help us, you know, please recommend some, um, some parameters and, and, and some, some, you know, uh, ordinances that allow us to, for this to happen. So, so the initial ask is not to develop these guidelines. It's just whether or not we should ask you to develop these guidelines, I guess I should say. Um, the other thing I think I wanted to talk about. Anyway, we talked about what alternate housing types might be. I, I kind of wanted to put out a list of different things. It can be, it could be simply difference in lot sizes. Um, you know, it, it could be a lot of different things. And, and I think we want to leave it open. Um, and I did have that. Okay. The other thing is, is right now we've got a proposal before us that is for, um, single family detached. It's in that RES area. And so that's where that kind of conflict is. Uh, but there's a second part to that, which is saying that the LDRs should still be, oh, I'm over time, I apologize. The, the LDR should still be single family detached predominant. That to me is much more radical than, than what we're proposing in the RES. I think it's such a small little thing that most people won't even notice. But I think this is actually more radical. And, but I do think that it, it's really would be very good. Um, I've heard a lot of complaints. There, there have been complaints about this, um, intent statement. A lot of people have said, well, our infrastructure can't handle more density or that high density would, would ruin, will ruin West Provo. Um, I just want to make clear, this is not an increase in density at all. Whether globally or even within these areas, it's, it's, you know, it's not asking to do that. We talked about really quickly that the transferring of development, development rights, that is a very complex thing. This takes that completely out. We still have areas that are high density, higher density. We still have areas that are low density. That's not changing in this proposal. Um, I've heard multiple housing types are hard for developers, particularly smaller developers. I've heard that. But the developers that I have talked to and the have, have not indicated that that's their main primary concern. Their primary concern is just getting caught up in, uh, you know, the spin cycle in, in the city. Um, and then finally, um, anything other than single family detached doesn't fit with the area. Sometimes it's a little more blunt. Uh, you know, we don't want renters or, um, we don't want others, um, which is there was a, um, Rick's, no, I don't remember his name exactly, but, uh, in, in the neighborhood spoke eloquently about why he loves living in West Provo. And it was, it's beautiful. Um, what he talked about, he, he loves the, the Provo River Trail. He loves the Equestrian Trail. He loves the, the park that it's planned to go in there. Uh, he loves the, the delta that's going to be there. He loves the, um, the Marina, the Utah Lake, whatever state park there, that's there. He, he loves all these things. And he's listing off all these things. And I'm thinking so much of that are public amenities that are paid for by the general public. And kind of what is, they're saying is if we don't want anything besides, you know, they're, 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 they're saying that these homes, according to the developer, the price point is nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And even those cluster homes that we talked about are still six fifty. And, uh, you know, a, a townhome is, is a half a million. But if we're saying we don't want anything, you know, nothing below that nine fifty fits in West Provo, we're basically saying, you know, no one else, any, no one that can't, can't, anyone that can't afford the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar home shouldn't get to live nearby all of these public amenities and, and the things that are, that are, are great about this. I really think that we can do this in a way that that does not jeopardize that the, you know, the feel of the area, but can still have a broader, I'm way over, I apologize. Still has more people from different types of people will, will be able to enjoy, um, living in West Provo if we're willing to have some amount of mixture of housing types. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. I'm just going to follow up if I can really quickly before you step away to make sure that I understand what I'm gathering, the real focus of, um, your question for us is, it is about mandating maybe. Um, although I think you asked more about just creating the opportunity from a zoning perspective, but mandating that there not be homogeneous developments approved, uh, singular housing types within a particular development proposal that rather, um, there'd be some requirements imposed to, to, uh, diversify that. Is that?
Housing types, yes. I would say now that you've had these presentations, I think if you read through the intent statement, it'll make a lot more sense. Um, but I would just say, yeah, the question as, as explained earlier is at what scale, at what granularity do we want that mixture of housing types? Are we okay with it being global and being separated out? Or do we think that there needs to be more in, more, uh, finer grain to that? And that's, that's, that's where it's at.
Sorry. But I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're good. I've, I've talked way too much.
Like, like I think you just put a fine point on, again, kind of my question. You say global, so that's maybe if we're doing an inventory of, of the next fifteen hundred homes are going to be built in West Provo. Uh, breaking down those by way of a percentage being townhomes, twin homes, certain sized lots, single family, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, versus looking uh, maybe more parcel to parcel or development, development and applying that same kind of kind of mix at that scale. Is that the granular part of the?
Can we pull up the land use map, the future land use map? Yeah, that's what they're working on right now. Okay, awesome. Uh, let me, let me say it this way while, while that's coming up. I think the question is, are we okay saying that everywhere that's LDR, is it okay that everything in, in those gray, sorry, the, the dark? There you go. Everything that's in those brown LDR areas, are we okay with everything in there being townhomes? And are we okay with everything being in that light green, light yellow RES? Are we okay with those being solely single family detached without variation in lot sizes? That's, that's one interpretation because there's still, I have a hard time calling that a mixture of housing types, but there's still multiple housing types that are going in. Or do we want to say, no, actually inside that RES, there needs to be a diversity of housing types. And inside that LDR, there needs to be a diversity of housing types.
Okay. Thank you. I'll bet I was the last one to really catch on, but that's helpful for me. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
I think it's us now. So, Mr. Jensen, or maybe Robert, do you have something?
So, yeah, I think at this point, it's kind of like we would like some feedback from all of you to kind of talk about the next steps of where you want us to go because, the crux of this comes down to how we interpret this map, right? Like, so at what granularity do we include that mix of housing types? The first group with Jonathan took those original policies that talked about a mix of housing types and they came up with this that says, these are the areas that we want to have single family detached. These are the areas that we want to have, um, a mix of townhouses and, uh, those stacked units in the MDR area, right? That's how that was interpreted initially. Mr. Harding's proposal is saying, actually, we want that a little bit more granularity to say at each type of development, we want to see that mixing of housing types. Yeah. So
Okay.
we, we would welcome any feedback that you have.
Back to Commissioner Jensen. Thank you.
Well, what I heard in the various presentations was that those areas that are designated RES um, were done that way because the transportation infrastructure was better on Lakeview Parkway for higher density. So though I love the idea of having this mixed use throughout the whole area, throughout the whole city, it would be phenomenal. Um, right out of the starting gates, we've said Center Street and Six Hundred South and eleven fifty South in most areas can't support the higher density. And that's why they're all on the map at Lakeview Parkway. So that was one thing. Um, that having been said, Mr. Hill pointed out to us that the developers are using this map, this document very thoroughly already. The projects that we've seen have perfectly aligned pictorially with what's on the map. So it's helpful if we see that the developers are using this map um, and using this document to guide what they're bringing forward as a proposal. It's helpful to have these bullet points suggested. But I don't know that we want to mandate it because of the aforementioned reason, that it might not be logical. And, um, Mr. Harding said that, uh, it's not really increasing the overall density. You're still putting the same number of units. Um, like that holiday one that had been modified that we haven't seen yet. Um, it's the same number of bodies will be in the same space, but it looked more crowded to me. So I'm not sure if the numbers actually match up. So that's another conversation for another day. I think maybe putting that missing middle graphic in there that he, that he showed us with some of the other housing types is great for giving ideas to a developer and maybe having the text that's in there be language that suggests the vision without becoming a mandate to developers because they still have that four per acre that they have to meet regardless. So I feel like I love the increase in information that's within this intent statement. I love the, the explaining in words what a vision is. Um, but I'm, I, I would throw that graphic in there to explain what the bullet point suggests and what, what the vision could be. But I, I'm worried about making it a mandated. Everything has to meet this because that also misses out on some of the traffic issues or, or whatever that the map was built around. So that, those are my ideas.
I would second that.
We have a second, my Mr. Knitson.
Makes it easy. It's like Commissioner Ricky August teed up, so.
Yeah, um, so I like the idea of perhaps graduating it by the size of the development. The fact that like a ten acre development might only accommodate like two different sizes of single family homes or something like that as as being the thing. But if we're doing a sixty acre development, there's a lot more room to be flexible and to create something like Dave showed. Um, I do, if we're really talking about four units per acre, then I do think that even though it looks more dense, or at least parts of it look more dense, it's not really. And I do think that there's probably going to be um, some sense of people who are on a street with big homes, wanting that whole street to be big homes. I don't know how much we want to accommodate that um, entirely, um, because um, one of the things that came out of a meeting, uh, a couple of years ago was the idea of creating like a, a retirement friendly spot within a neighborhood that was a family neighborhood that would allow people to age in place essentially without having to leave their neighborhood. And that was a beautiful concept to me. And so as I think about having, um, entry homes and mature family homes and retirement friendly homes in the same kind of a neighborhood, that really does appeal to me as being a beautiful kind of a thing. So I do think that the size of the development might increase the requirement for diversity in home types. Um, and I also think we need a new zone. We need a residential variety zone. Um, that is because everybody comes in, they're like, oh, I'm, I want this and I want you to give me R one-eight, or I want this and I want R one-ten. That's everything I have seen come through looks like that. I don't think I have seen anything that doesn't look like that in the entire time I've been working on this. I like the idea of the variety, but I don't know that we have a zone to make, to accommodate that.
So, so can I follow up on that one? I, I think that's such great comments. We have zones that permit it. We don't have zones that mandate it at this point. So if that's a recommendation, then yeah, we can definitely, that's a couple of words tweaked in a, in the LDR zone or the V LDR zone, frankly, that would require that mix of housing types. And so those are, those are suggestions that we can bring back to you. Yeah. Uh, can I follow up on one other thing? Um, I think that, um, Ms. Mrs. Argiake, the, the the concept that you bring up of a mix of housing in your neighborhood, I think that's also at the crux of this issue. Um, because a lot of people interpret neighborhood in a lot of different ways, right? And so how And so how broad is that? Um, context of is the, are we talking about the Fort Utah neighborhood? Are we talking about a few blocks? You know, so those are the, those are the questions that have come up in, in the past. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if you want to just kind of go in order. Go ahead. Yeah, I could take a lot more than fifteen minutes on this and I'm afraid that I'll sound like I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth. But uh, I'd love the idea of the, for example, the plan that was shown of the project that we made the recommendation to approve. That it butts the river on the north end. We recommended that it be approved with basically one type of housing, one. Size of lots, kind of plan B, if we call it that. I, I really appreciate that. I like that. I think that does make for um a. Higher quality of life for residents in a community. Um. That being said, I, I think. I, I really struggle with, with um. For some reason, the need to look at things, just bigger picture entirely. And with that uh. Neighborhood lines go out the window, west sidelines go out the window, different things like that. So rather than looking at the housing inventory just in this part of Provo, looking at the housing inventory of all of Provo and how Provo's growing. Now throughout the city and where. And I would love to see numbers if we went back maybe five years. Of the types of housing that the cities approved. And then maybe the, the. She grew. Numbers of building permits that have been issued, even just city as a whole would be drilling down to the next step would be great as well. But just to see what portion has been attached housing versus detached housing. Um, which for me, without having kept track, it just feels like maybe it's forty or fifty to one in terms of. Attached and I know we've seen some numbers that have been presented to us, but maybe if you can just hold that in case that's where you want to go. Um, uh, for me, that does factor into. Um, taking advantage of opportunities where developers are willing to build. Certain housing products that are in really high demand in a valley, in a regional housing market and that sort of a thing. So to tell developers in those situations where you're, you're dealing with a density that really, I think in the marketplace is conducive to people making the most money. If a product is homogeneous versus something diverse, I, I think it's kind of like pushing rope uphill. Um, and not only that, but I think Provo, there, there is a significant need to be more balanced than we have been in recent years. Um, that's why I continue to struggle when we see two, four, six hundred unit apartment projects. Um, that don't have an opportunity for people to, to put down the roots, I think that people tend to when they're. Building equity and that sort of a thing. Um. That really makes me worry not about tomorrow for Provo, but twenty, thirty, forty years down the road. Just to what the, the community will be. Um. And this seems to be an area that's maybe more conducive to, to, to promoting more balance than what we've seen. Uh, so that being said, maybe for me also, I'd mention as I try to wrap up quick. For me, the four unit to the acre number is not magic. There's nothing magic about it unless maybe there genuinely is some utility restriction. Um, if a developer, for example, could, could develop uh twenty acres with, let's say. You know, fifty homes on individual lots that are sized enough that they have room. Maybe for a pad for a boat or a toy hauler or some of the things that I think, you know, people look for, you know, in the marketplace and just a little bit of space to have some. Some things uh, you know, with their domicile. Um, but yet include in that same neighborhoods, twin homes or, you know, different things to kind of get to more of the diversity to where. Um, still that inventory of single family homes on individual lots of a certain size. Is growing to maybe balance other growth that we have elsewhere in the community. Be all for it totally. Um, but uh, I really feel like there's been an absence of the suburban sprawl, which is where I feel like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. Because I'm not a believer in that inherently. But this is a, I mean, it's, it's a real market and people absolutely leave Provo to go there, to go with other communities because. There's more of that available. And I think that uh oftentimes is unfortunate. So I hope that doesn't sound like too much of a soapbox, but that, that's kind of my thought, which maybe leads me more to um making sure that zoning provisions are set up to be permissive. Of a developer's maybe desire to be. Um, uh, more diverse relative to what they design for a development. Uh, but um, uh, I'd probably only be in favor of mandating diversity here. If elsewhere in the community, we were mandating more diversity as well, maybe more single family homes. You know, more product that ultimately could be owner occupied and that sort of thing. And then I could buy in really quickly to the idea of mandating the same kind of diversity out here. But uh, in that, that really, I think is the. Thing that is driving what I'm feeling here is that I really feel like we are creating very homogeneous neighborhoods elsewhere. And uh. Not that that needs to, you know, happen at the expense of this, but, but that's partly where I see a need to, to balance that inventory. So. Did you have anything that you wanted to mention maybe really quickly? One to eight, I think it was.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I have calculated these over the last two years. I sent them uh to the planners. Um, I couldn't pull them up right now. I can't find them, but um, it's around two thousand apartments that have been approved over the last two years. Uh, for some reason, I remember this number, it's four hundred and eleven townhomes. Um, and it's uh about a hundred and fifty single family homes that we've approved over the last two years. So the ratio of attached to detached is very, very heavily in favor of attached in the city. Um, now, distribution is very different as well, I think, which you're talking about. Over half of the new townhomes are in that lower corner. The rest are like in southeast Provo. Um, so all the townhomes are kind of in southeast Provo, um, in south Provo at least. And then, you know, we get these big developments downtown, like what you saw tonight, right? Six hundred multifamily attached kind of units, so.
I appreciate that. Thanks. And I acknowledge to you that, you know, some of that in the last few years is just a function of what the housing market is too. And, and that does change over time without a doubt, but uh, Mr. Harding.
Just wanted to remind everyone that there's kind of two aspects to this. I mean, already we've seen this about fifty percent attached, fifty percent unattached. If you go by kind of the, the status quo, and that's what we're going to get. Um, yes. Ten to twenty percent of the area in the res might go to something alternate, might be clustered homes, which is still single family detached. But the big thing, the radical thing is in the LDR where it's saying that single family detached should still be predominant. That's one of the policies and that's being ignored. Single family detached should be predominant even in LDR. And so if we're, I think if we. Pass this or recommend this and then we. Uh, pass the intent statement and pass it back to you to, to come up with some recommendations. We're looking for, for, for things that would give us more single family detached across the whole area. It's just a little bit more, po- potentially some of it could be attached in the res. And, but a lot of that LDR would be single family detached.
Versus the townhomes, is that right?
Versus the townhomes.
Okay.
So, so yeah, I just think in those LDRs, it still should be uh single family detached predominant. And then variety of housing types, but still hitting that target density or still allowing up to that target density.
Thanks. Thank you. Yeah. I love that, by the way. I mean, I um. It was easy for me to support D R Horton's proposal with the townhomes again, just because it was some kind of owner occupied product. And I feel like we hadn't seen much of that. Um, but it just as easily could have been. The townhomes with small lot, single family and, and, and a whole lot of other things, which I know they have in their repertoire that they. They build all the time. So I, I think that's a great point. By the time.
Yep.
The next.
Wow, uh. Yeah, to keep this under ten minutes, um, so many things I could say right now. Uh, one of the first things that really struck me was we had this in our paperwork. It was really hard to understand. And then I see this picture and I'm like, there it is. I see what we're trying to accomplish, piece of cake. You know, this is a hundred pages worth of stuff in one picture. I feel like we need more pictures. Uh, I mean, sadly, this is like eight units to the acre, nine units to the acre. Uh, and this was a problem I ran into on a project in Heber uh we were designing. We had this. The city had no idea what this was going to give them. When we showed up as a developer and we designed exactly to the, the plan they had. The city looked at it and said, that's not what we want. They had no idea what their codes were going to give them. They had no idea what the zoning was going to give them. And it turned into a bloodbath between the lawyers uh on that project. Uh, as well as that project uh to, to the idea of, of mixing housing types with percentages. Makes good use in theory, doesn't work in uh practice. Uh, because on this particular site, we ended up needing to find room for two more duplex units. Even though they didn't really fit the design and they kind of ended up in a wonky spot, we had to have them to meet the zone. And so we had these weird design decisions because we had to meet these very specific percentages. Uh, that made the development, I think, worse. Uh, it's one of those things, if we could have good designers, design these properties every time, I think. The zoning wouldn't have to be so rigid. Uh, but so often we end up with engineered, I'm sorry to keep bashing on engineers. But I feel like the engineered plans are just lifeless and they're all cookie cutter. You know, the ease of placing lines in AutoCAD is what's determining the, the design instead of real. You know, thought out design. Uh, but for me, I feel like the only way to really get what we want is to design the space. Do we really know what this four unit is going to do to us? When this whole thing develops out, my biggest fear is that the early developments are going to eat up the three thousand nine hundred some odd units. The last people that come to town, there's not going to be any units left. Uh, because they've been kind of smashed in other places. Uh. And I really feel like to have a conceptual design. Uh. I've actually got a presentation about this. I'm trying to jam it all into just words. Maybe we can run this presentation at a future meeting. But to have. A concept, I use the idea of concept cars all the time because I think that's the best thing. We're missing the concept car. And we're just telling the different people that design a car, you design the door, you design the mirror, you design the hood. And somehow we're going to mash those together eventually. Uh, or take the example of a, a house without an architect and the first guys show up and you say, hey, just do what you think is best. And the foundation guy, he's going to max out his foundation because that's what he gets paid most to do. And the framers are going to frame up what's going to make them, what's best for them. And then suddenly the HVAC guys show up and there's no room for their, their, their ductwork. And the electricians show up and we didn't know what electrical service we were going to, and the cabinet guy, man, the poor cabinet guy near the end. You know, he can't fit anything in because there was no plan to guide the entire thing, no clear plan. And I feel like. Wow, that mic is really sensitive. I feel like this la- future land use map is a good start, but I don't think it goes good enough. To, for us to understand what it's going to give us. As well as to attract the right developer to the right parcel of land. Uh, I don't think that concept needs to be rigid. I think it can be flexible. But in my experience developing with developers. They hardly look past their property line. And so you end up the. Whatever the property is, the first thing you do is put a road around the outside edge with room for houses on that outside edge. And then you put the, the, you know, required stub road to somewhere that maybe someday the next adjoining lot will connect to. But it just doesn't, over time, it doesn't connect well. And you end up with these wonky weird streets that all connect weird and. And. Developments that just aren't connected well. I think to have an overall concept plan. And I really don't even think we need to hire a, a consultant to do that. I think we have good planners in the city. That can do that and take the money you'd pay a consultant and hire a designer to just spend their time designing the city. Uh, and as new developments come in, we adjust the design based on what they propose. And it's a constantly moving target, but at least we have context to make good decisions. Instead of just this, the, the. I know we need the legal stuff to keep things legal, but I feel like design it, then make the legal fit the design rather than. Create the, the parameters and then hope that developers get it right. Uh, I feel like. Other cities are doing this. They're creating plans. They're adjusting those plans. Uh, Vineyard is the one that comes to mind for me. Vineyard had a plan. They just revised part of their plan. It looks totally different than their original. And I know one developer that's going into Vineyard that he picked a parcel based on. Uh, that plan. He specifically went to Vineyard because he knew what his neighbors were going to be. And he knew where he was going to fit within their city. And it's, it's an incredible project. It's, it's comparable to Juilliard. Uh, it's going to be a huge boon to Vineyard. And he went because they had a plan where he understood who his neighbors were going to be. His plan is not going to be what they had on their concept, but at least it fits what they were expecting. Uh, we may push some people away. There may be developers that are like, no, I don't want to meet that. Uh, we may need to come back and revise some things that maybe aren't working out. But at least it gives us context to make decisions and it attracts the right developer to the right parcels. So that would be my, I, I think we need more of this. Um, yeah, that's all I've got to say.
Um, as far as feedback goes, I don't, I don't have a lot to say honestly. Um. But I do, as far as the vision that I uh most closely align with would be that of. What uh Councilman Harding shared, uh, more fine granular. Where more fine granular zoning. The fall.
So looking for more diverse.
Yeah.
Developments versus just more diversity in the broader area.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, can I just follow up with a couple of things, Mr. Anderson? I'll be really brief. Um. Thank you all for your feedback and I just want to specifically thank Mr. Hill. Mr. Harding to come and present to us, really help you all understand that well, uh, what we're doing. As a planner, um, a mix of housing types is euphoria, right? But that's what we really, really strive for. Um, I want to also say that it's going to be really important. Uh, for you as the planning commission that we kind of move this process along so you can now hear from the neighborhood. Because that's the other really, really important part of this process. And the neighborhood is really important and critical in how this was originally created and interpreted. Um, so I think that. I- if I was to make a suggestion, I would say, you know, have us come back to you with some of the thoughts that you've made. Um, and then kind of open it up for that public hearing process to actually hear from the neighborhood, but.
To follow up on that thought, it may be, and we may have taken a little bit more time than anybody anticipated tonight, but. We've taken enough that on what Mr. Mills just said. I'm not necessarily hearing that we're suggesting that there be a change in the approach to implementing. The plan as it's been put forth already. Am I here, or is, or is anyone hearing differently? Do we need to kind of try to tie a bow on what?
I think the question is whether we like the idea of having an intent statement that refines, that guides the implementation better.
Does this, does what's existing? In, in the opinion of the planning commission, n- need this further intent statement to further refine? The direction that we're going, because it will, it will change the direction that we're going.
And you feel it will in what way? Help me understand that. Because even as I read this and I look at what's been before us.
Well, the require, because the, the next step after that would be to actually have a mandate of a mix of housing types. At each um of those RES blobs and the mix of housing types in the LDR area. Currently, that's not a requirement per zoning. Um, but Mr. Harding's statement would then motivate us to come back to you as the planning commission. With ordinances that would actually make those requirements.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and maybe I've heard mixed messages amongst us here tonight, which is partly why. Can you help at all here?
Well, I just, I, I think. Well, I just, I, I think you just want us to say whether we like making, we need to say whether we want to mandate it with an intent statement, or whether we want to suggest it with an intent statement, or whether we want to throw the intent statement in the trash and leave it i- in this weird, open interpretation that it's been in.
Or maybe you listen to, listen to residents and then.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be another.
So I, if I were to answer Mr. Mills' question, I would say, I would love to have you guys bring back an intent statement. This is just Lisa Jensen talking. My, what I would love to see is an intent statement that doesn't mandate, but very clearly suggests really great ideas, like you did with Mr. Halliday, changing from A to B and has images in it. So the wording that we got in the written intent statement that has some sort of graphics in it that shows that vision in a generic sense. And I would say bring that and let's hear what the public has to say about it. So am I hearing that that's what you're asking us for? So that's just me suggesting, that's not saying that should be the next step. But what they want to hear from us is, do we like the idea of having some clarifying intent statement? And if so, how soon, what do they need to do to make it better so that the public can speak on it?
I appreciate the way you articulated that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I was just going to say, I would support that kind of an approach where it's like, let's look at um, something that is not mandatory, but strongly encouraged with some creative graphics to get the juices going and then take that to the community.
Thoughts on that? Again, try to wrap it up maybe.
Yes. Um, so, so the intent statement is not saying from here to eternity, this is how we're going to interpret it. The intent, the intent statement says, we would like the planning commission and staff to come back with some suggestions on how this can be implemented. Oh, and in the meantime, we're not going to pass anything that doesn't kind of fit this general idea. Uh, so, so really the, the intent statement is just, is just asking you guys to, to, to fill in those details. Um, without the intent statement, it's, we're not asking you to fill in those details. Um, and then the one other thing that I wanted to say is that, um, so with the holiday proposal, whatever, he came up with this, uh, you know, idea of if this, if you're going to require me to do this, this is how I'm going to do it. Um, and then, and then, um, the neighborhood meeting came and, and people were against it or whatever. And he said, if you're not going to require me to do this, I'm just going to go back and do what I planned to, planned to do originally. Because to, if, if you just have that maximum, um, density, the, the best way to maximize his return on investment is to make them all the same size and, and all single family detached. It's only when it's required, then okay, to make this happen, I need to have this mixture in. So if we don't have that requirement, I just don't think we're going to get much, unless we give more density. That's the only other way to encourage it is to either give more density or say you have to do it.
I would also say at this point, um, that, that goes kind of to the next step of what exactly those ordinances would require and things like that. Really at this point, it's like, do you feel like an intent statement is a good thing necessary for, to make that recommendation to the council?
Yeah.
For clarification, for clarification purposes. And then to allow that public hearing to take place, receive the information from the, the public and then make a recommendation to council who would then either adopt that intent statement or not. If they do adopt that intent statement, that triggers the next set of processes that would say, okay, now we're going to actually make these ordinances that fit this intent statement. So settle in.
This is the beginning of a long.
Process.
And, uh, boy, I've got to say, there is a way to not make it a long process. We could cut to the chase. Absolutely. And add language to the area plan that says what Commissioner Jensen just articulated. And that could be taken into account when we look at zone changes. And, um, that sort of a thing. I think there is a way to short circuit a lengthy, um, drawn out kind of process. And I kind of do feel like we're making this more complicated, maybe that needs to be with, with the, and yet I understand, I think, why you're saying what you're saying, Robert, in terms of the process and what the next steps could be. But, um, I don't think this is a super complicated issue in my mind. I mean, it's, it's one direction or another. It's mandated or it's, it's encouraged. You know, trying to come up with some way to induce people or entice people to, to follow a particular path. Um, there could be a zoning element in terms of maybe having a, a zone developed that would fall maybe more into the mandate kind of a category. But, um, I think we've had a lot of great discussion tonight that probably, uh, doesn't need to be repeated a few times.
Yeah.
Um, just my thought there. I'm really hesitant to have, to put my colleagues through much more conversation tonight. I love this stuff, but do you have anything that maybe you wanted to share quickly, Saad?
Yeah, I'm with you. I don't know how much we want to spend on this tonight. Um, I just wanted to fill in a little bit on the, the holiday thing. So the one you saw was his original plan. That's the one you guys recommended to city council. Um, then Dave talked to him, said, hey, what about this alternative? He made it. Um, the neighborhood really did not like it. And this is going to be an interesting issue if we try to mandate or even encourage this, maybe even a little more with encouraging, because the neighbor is going to say, well, we don't want that anyway, right? Um, at Dave Harding's suggestion, I actually had them, I usually don't do this, had them rate them on a scale of one to 10, 10 being best kind of thing, the two alternative plans when they came back. Um, the one that came to you, uh, was rated at, uh, an eight point something kind of rating. Um, some people still want to see cows there, right? And so it wasn't perfect, but it was there. Uh, the alternative was rated at 2.7 on average. And so the gap was large between those two areas. And so one thing to consider as you go through this is how do we do this? And this is something important to me as a neighborhood chair. That's why I emphasized how clean this has become for the neighborhood, right? Is I did not like the fights we had before where the neighborhood would say one thing, city council would do another. It'd be back and forth. People felt like they weren't listened to, right? And so one goal I would hope that we have is to make sure that whatever gets passed is perfectly clear for everybody so that it doesn't bounce back and forth and come back and forth. Interestingly, his original plan, if you look at the current bullet points on the intent statement, um, the developer and I sat down and said, oh, well, how does it look with this intent statement? And 15% of his development would count as alternative types. In his case, mostly an RA lot, a couple of other larger lots. Um, one, he's got one kind of flag lot, shared driveway kind of thing in there. And so he's looking at it and saying, I meet the intent statement. Whereas city council is saying, well, we want to make sure the intent statement is ready because we don't think you meet the, the intent statement, right? And those are some ambiguities that I don't think we want to create in the process. If that makes sense.
That I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I'm curious, what were the reasons the, the neighborhood, the people in the neighborhood didn't like the?
Yeah. So there's a couple of things. First of all, the plan that you saw tonight, um, and, and Dave Harding will say this too, it actually did bump the density up. Um, and Dave Harding has said he would, he would make them cut out a couple of lots and get that density back down. Um, and so the neighborhood felt like we really have to toe a line here. Um, the concerns were, first of all, the, the triplexes that were in there were going to be designated as rental units. They were going to be true multifamily, um, owned by the developer and rented out. And people felt like in Provo, why are we designating rentals over ownership opportunities? So that was one concern. Two, they felt like even though they look like a mansion home, it would still be a fairly large building. They felt like it would detract from it. And this, and also several people brought up parking issues on those cases. Where do you put the garages and the driveways when you have a mansion style home? Usually these are found in more downtown areas and don't really have parking areas. Um, someone brought up concerns with clustered driveways, the kind of issues you have. You have to create like, you know, shared space kind of thing. They said, just give everybody their own driveway. And then finally they did feel like it was a hodgepodge mixture. It was kind of what Brian Henry was talking about, where they were just sticking them places. And the developer felt this way too, and it, it decreased the coherency of that development. And that is something too. Um, talking to a developer, I mean, it's kind of funny. Dave Harding said he's a PhD scientist, so am I. Um, and so I am not a, a planner and I talked to developers and I talked to developer and he said, what they really like is that flexibility where you can go in and say, this is how I can maximize the best use of this land. And so more flexibility allowing types may be a benefit, but when you require it, you start to get this kind of hodgepodge mixture, especially on small areas. At the city council meeting, a DR Horton representative said that once you're above 40 or 50 acres, you can do a master planned community. You can do a park space for some of the space, right? You can do different things and you have a lot more flexibility in those sizes. Um, and so maybe that's a question as well, you know, do we scale this up with different percentages, different requirements with different sizes? Because you get more flexibility. Um, so yeah, those are the concerns. Higher density of course brings up traffic, et cetera. But as you said, that's not on the table for this particular intent statement. Okay.
Thank you. In terms of next steps and public involvement, not to short circuit that at all, but I think it's highly predictable that uh, the public is going to want to have as low density as possible. Um, development that's as consistent with what they already have as possible. As little change as possible, if you will, on those types of things. Not that that means that that's the best for the community at all or anything, but I think we can assume that going forward and take that into account however we want. That's my opinion.
That's true. I think we have already received seven letters, I think, that I received your email and I forwarded them to you from residents in the area. Um, we can kind of gather from the letters that they do support what you're saying, but I think it's going to be important to make sure they have the opportunity to say that to the planning commission as well. So I don't think we can short circuit that step too much.
Can eliminate it probably.
Well, I don't think that you're saying we shouldn't hear from the public. I think you're saying maybe we can modify our ideas so that when we hear from the public, we have a better view of what might be discussed.
Maybe at a very pointed part of the process where it's really clear.
So I think next step is we'll just bring this to the planning commission as a, as a general plan amendment item.
Okay, great. Okay. Awesome. I hope that helps. I really do. I really appreciate commissioners, you guys taking the time on that.
That's a great discussion. Um, we have one more item. Do you want me to do that or?
Let me ask, and I am terrible at suggesting that we take breaks. If we do want to proceed forward, would people like to take a break? If we want to, uh, postpone this to another time, what I'm.
I can put the thoughts into your head and we can discuss it at a different time.
I'm comfortable either way. Honestly, please.
It's already dark, so I'm already riding my bike off in the dark, so.
Like a ride.
No, we don't want to go too late necessarily. So I think if we had an introduction and then.
Sure.
And is there somebody here tonight to speak to what we're talking about? Is this?
Um, it, well, it's me. Customarily, we don't do, uh, public discussion. However, uh, Mr. Connect has asked that if he could comment on what we're going to be talking about in Southeast Provo. So that's up to you guys.
Yeah. Um, how do we feel about maybe having Mr. Mills tee it up? And hearing from Mr. Connect for a few minutes? And then what would be next? Would it be another discussion on planning commissions in a couple of weeks, that type of thing?
Yeah.
Do you happen to know how the next agenda looks? Any feel for that? Really heavy, hard to say at this point?
So nothing's on there yet.
Okay.
So good luck with that. We don't have to have a meeting.
No, there will be things on that next meeting.
Really? I heard nothing.
That's a, there's nothing yet.
Okay.
Okay.
But we might have some time.
Let me grab the clicker.
Um, everybody good with that? Robert, Mr. Connect, okay?
Okay.
Let me give a little bit of background on this discussion. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, there were some council members that asked us to bring this to the planning commission, uh, just to get your thoughts and kind of direction on where we should go next. Uh, there are, specifically we were asked, should changes be made that would allow lower density zones on the future land use map? Uh, strengthened and expanded commercial zones, uh, and some diversity of housing types. So I'm going to present what is currently designated, what the future land use map designates. And maybe just, uh, a quick thought on what permitted uses are already there. And then, um, what I'd just like from you is just any input you might have. This is a brief history of the Southeast Neighborhood Plan. Basically was started in 2015 at the very beginning. Uh, lots of community, um, involvement in that process. And the resulting plan in 2017 was adopted by the city council. Um, and then here we're now asked to kind of revisit that. I think it's important to know that plans should be revisited, that we should ask these questions and we should bring them up again. I'm not going to go over this, but these are the, the stated goals that are in the neighborhood plan. Um, and establish that clear vision is really important. When the, uh, Southeast Neighborhood Plan was first adopted, this is what the current zoning map looked like. Uh, I want to draw particular attention to that gray area of M1. So just to give context of location, uh, the red line that you see, uh, along that east or excuse me, the western side, that's basically the railroad tracks. Um, and then the western, or excuse me, the eastern side of the M1 is areas, state streets. So Southeast Provo is very interesting. All of you know this, that there is a very large road and a very large railroad. And it makes that area of development in that, in that in-between area kind of tricky. So this is what it was currently zoned in 2015 when they started this process. This is the future land use map that resulted from a lot of neighborhood meetings, a lot of, uh, interesting conversations on where we should go in the future. Um, you can see, uh, that there's a mix of LDR zones, open space. Um, there's some connectivity, uh, and then that was a large swath of MDR. And even on the future land use map, um, that area was actually given a batching overlay, which would allow for additional density. Um, on the east side of State Street, uh, it was interesting to note that there is that patch of R1, so single family detached, um, right along State Street that would actually have been a conversion of, uh, commercial property.
Okay.
Is that where that Chinese restaurant and, uh, the gas station are by bicentennial park?
Uh, near there. Uh, and then some other R1 areas that were, uh, up a little bit closer to Slick Canyon Drive, um, along Nevada Avenue kind of thing where those were agricultural areas and then they were re-designated. I want to talk briefly about what our current zoning is because there was a, a concern that was brought up of we're getting a lot of similar housing types, a lot of similar uses in this area. And also how do we bolster economic activity in this area? There were comparisons made that, um, what we would really love to see is if you've been on 400 South in Springville, uh, so where Walmart is and connecting in from basically the freeway, uh, where Walmart is into Springville downtown, that's 400 South. Lots of development happening there, commercial uses. There's a new science bank. There's all sorts of stuff going on there, right? And so why can't we have something similar to that along South State Street, right? What can we do as far as changing future land use designations or zoning that would allow those types of things? This is our current zoning map of what we have there today. You can see in blue, that's, uh, residential conservation. Those are existing homes. Uh, there is some mix of Prozone in there. Uh, and then there's LDR development that has been basically townhouses. If you see LDR on this map, it's basically townhouses.
That's West Gate, up against the railroad tracks, right?
Correct. Um, and then you see RM is actually the, the mobile home park. Uh, and then further south, you'll start to see kind of a mix up of, uh, that MDR, that's 1300 South. We're looking at the very bottom of the map. That's where those, uh, FHA condos were constructed. So they actually for sale owner occupied condos, uh, and then townhouses. And then the, I don't know if y'all remember the, the development that was approved uh, from the city property that kind of had that mix of uh, single family dwellings plus the tw- the twin homes that was on the substation property. So that's where that is. Uh, this is a little bit further south. Uh, that A15 portion, y'all recently saw that was. That A15 portion, you all recently saw that was the Remington Commons. So that was rezoned to MDR. Uh, just south of that is actually gray right now because that is currently uh not annexed into our city yet, but the intention is is that that will come into the city uh and be a uh neighborhood commercial node there. The one thing that I want to point out is on the east side of the road. We have SC1, we have tons of commercial, I'm going to go back really quickly. We have commercial CM all along there. And then the SC2 site is the Pioneer Drive-In site. That has essentially been vacant for almost two decades, probably over two decades now. Uh, additional commercial along there. I think that when you look at this map and then you look at this map, part of the problem is is that the future land use map that was developed and adopted as part of the neighborhood plan doesn't exactly tell the entire story. Of it, it's only talking about possible future uses rather than the uses that are already zoned, probably the way that we would want them. As a planner, I can't imagine how we would change the future land use designation of like the Pioneer Drive-In site to something other than what we would want to see in a SC2 type zone. SC2 is what you would consider like like a Smiths with uh additional commercial pads and and things like that. It could be really a little bit above a neighborhood commercial center. It becomes a little bit more regional, serving that area. So this is, this would be a perfect location for a grocery store for the southeast area. And so as planners, and I'm sure as you all, you have to start considering. So if we have the zoning in place that would allow the types of uses, maybe we need to start looking at other market forces that are maybe preventing some of these things. Because as a planner and you look at these things right now and you compare them to 400 South in Springville, we would welcome all of those types uh like a bank or a grocery store or any of those types of things that that are developing in in 400 South along South State Street. And so the question then arises is, are there things that we could do to this map? That would indicate a better um use for the future? Are there things that we need to look at this and revisit? As far as commercial development goes, as far as residential development goes, are there changes that should be made? Keeping in mind that there's not a lot left to make. There, most of these parcels have been developed, they're going up um and been approved. There are a couple left as far as some of the storage unit facilities are still left that could possibly and will likely redevelop in the future. But as a planning commission, is there anything else that you would like to see on this? And we don't have to go into a complete discussion this evening on this. But these are kind of the questions that we need to be asking ourselves as we look at these plans. This has been, you know, almost five years now that it's been approved. Things have been going forward. But if there are changes that need to be made, what are those? What do you want to see? How do you want to see that change? Things like that. That's kind of my presentation. I don't know if you want to hear from Mr. Connect now. He was so involved in this process going forward, so.
Yeah, he's waited this long. I
Yeah.
We can give him a few minutes and maybe I'll interject right now in case it's of any use. The implementation of the plan, I think, has been amazingly effective. It's happened. Um, the the plan has been put into play. I lament some of the changes that have come about in terms of uh um, again, this is not how I intended to describe things, but a particular part of the community with a very homogeneous population has become even less diverse and I think will become even less diverse with the type of development that has been approved, that's under construction now and being occupied and that type of a thing. Which not only don't think is healthy for the neighborhood, but also I think it likely further makes it difficult to maybe implement other parts of the plan and historic zoning like the drive-in site. And the idea that potentially having some non-residential development in the neighborhood is good for the city and the neighborhood and that type of a thing. So again, I think the plan has served its purpose based on the way it's put together. Now, I mean, you say maybe the evaluation is relative to whether the plan should be changed.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, you can see from from this side specifically that it was very strategic in in the type of use that was intended for that area, right? I mean, you can see a very large swath of MDR thatched that would have even allowed for greater density with a batching overlay, right? And so in one regard, it's been very successful uh at implementing the types of use that was intended there. Um, now the question is, you know, we've seen that develop, it's coming along. Are there changes that we should make? So those are just the questions that we ask periodically in good practice.
Absolutely. Mr. Connect, do you want to?
So as a matter of background, um, and and Lisa might be able to help me with this. Way back in like 1994, we had um Mayor Stewart uh put together a task force 2000, which was like 30 members of the community to redo the general plan. That took three and a half years, which we finally finished in like
I was long gone by then.
But I remember you. So I ended up being on that committee and ended up being the chair of the committee and and doing the presentation to the council. I've been a neighborhood chair in Southeast Provo in my neighborhood. Starting in 1994, even though they tried to get me in 92, but I didn't live in the neighborhood. Long story there. And so I've been in a chair, a council member, a chair again, a council member, and who knows what the future is. I'm I'm currently not uh the neighborhood chair or on the council anymore, but I was on the committee for Southeast Provo and that that took a while too. The west side of State Street, which is this weird almost a triangle of property that is sandwiched between two undesirable things that you don't want to necessarily live next to. A busy street and a railroad, which can be noisy. So uh it used to be for decades, forever, just kind of a backwater, a manufacturing, a all, I mean, in the seventies and eighties, I was there, I had a business there, auto repair. I mean, it's just untold numbers of businesses over the years have actually evaporated and gone away. And very little new stuff has been attracted. And so yeah, it's a valid concern to say, how can we bring the right things to this kind of backdoor, backwater? It doesn't have a or didn't have a great reputation, but I think that's changing rather rapidly as things are are building. So about three years ago, when I was on the council, we had the owner, the Cox family come uh and and we met in Dixon's office and and he brought along a developer and he says, hey, we would really like to do something on the Pioneer Drive-In property. Uh, maybe some higher density apartments, but most of all, a grocery store. Well, that didn't quite pan out because the grocery store, when when the city gave them all of the approvals and projected approvals based on the plan of what how many housing units we would have in the neighborhood. They said that that's great, but they're not built yet and we don't know that they ever will be built. And until you actually have the right number of units built, we're not going to gamble, we're not going to come. Now, did they actually give us the number? No, they didn't give us the number. Would be nice to know. But my feelings were, let's let's keep going with the plan and keep working with uh anyone that is a bona fide grocer until we finally get the rooftops needed. Because heaven knows we need a grocery store in Southeast Provo. We needed it even before Allen's disappeared because it wasn't much of a grocery store. And now that it's gone, man, Southwest doesn't have one, Southeast doesn't have one. It's our biggest tax leakage in the city. And you know, we can talk about owner occupancy, we can talk about community, we can talk about diversity and integration and and ghettos and gated communities and all that fun stuff. But you got to pay for it. And and grocery stores, it's not just a matter of convenience, it's a matter of of tax dollars. So I, you know, I i- if it was a perfect universe, maybe we would have less density. But then again, it is a major, major corridor and has been, I mean, it was I-15 before I-15 existed. It was the street. So um, I'm I'm kind of of the opinion, after all the hard work, to kind of stay the course and and actively work with whoever, and I believe someone is working on getting a grocery store on that property. But if you short circuit the process and say, well, we're not, we're going to stop short of your number because we don't like the density, we're we're going going to go with lower density and we we need to know what that number is. And then it's just as a matter of practicality, certain parts of town lend themselves to certain types of development. So here we have high density going in where you would kind of expect it. But then with Steve Stewart up on Slate Canyon Drive, he negotiated a old gravel pit into a gold mine with super high density up on the hillside where you wouldn't necessarily expect it. And and it's kind of caused some problems with with traffic and other things. So I don't know if you have any questions, but I don't necessarily think that the plan is is broken. It is great to review things, but if we're going to spend a lot of time doing a neighborhood plan, there's neighborhoods that are just begging for the first go around and and not all of a sudden a review just shortly after it's been approved.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, I want to know what your take is because as I look at the map, the future land use map, and I look at the zoning map, the main incongruity is the the areas that are zoned commercial that are not shown as we hope they develop commercial on the land use map. So how do you, how do you match that? You know, you've got on the west side of State Street, you've got that strip mall area that's zoned commercial that's already developed. And then the drive-in area and the auto repair places that are kind of adjacent to that that still have room for growth. So that's not reflected on this future land use map as as well, is it? Or is that commercial CG? Is that just the drive-in area that's on there? The map in front of us right now.
So the one in front of you. The one in front of you right now is uh that's just the the corner from just south of 1320 South.
So that's in brown right now. That doesn't show commercial to the north where the drive-in theater is.
It is the um, it's kind of grayed out or it's not grayed out, just more transparent brown to show that it is commercial now.
Okay.
But it doesn't necessarily show that on the future land use map.
So in my mind, the thing that I would change is to make that area be more defined in the zoning reflects this and we're still hoping for that. So unless we're hoping that ends up being medium density residential, I I would feel like the future land use map could reflect that zoning better. Is that what you're also in support of with your in interacting with the neighborhood?
The the old Pioneer property uh was designated and set apart for basically a grocery store. That was always the idea and that still is.
It just doesn't show that on this map. So that's why I wondered if maybe if we amended the map to reflect that that's still our hope, then maybe that commercial would be attractive because that is an undeveloped area. You know, like if if they're using these land use maps as as well as they seem to be bringing projects that reflect are reflected in the colors on the map, then maybe we need to make sure that that underlying zoning on those vacant properties is also reflected on this the way we think it is. So that we will send that message. We still want you to come here. This is not brown. This is pink.
Robert, would you comment on that?
Um, yeah, I think that's maybe part of the the concern, you know, that you you look at this really quickly and it doesn't tell the whole story. Whether or not that's going to drive somebody to build a grocery store there, I don't know.
But it will give them a better picture.
Yeah.
More available.
Yeah.
Yeah, and um just final comment, we have oh doesn't, yeah. If you know where the old jail was.
Dave, I think you have a point.
Uh huh. Ooh, there we go. So I believe that's the old jail property. And that has uh or is being developed by Dave Gardner and Associates as a 55 and older community.
Not really, though.
Not really? Has it changed?
I've heard the marketing is not 55 and older because they're multi-level houses.
They've kind of started marketing to a more diverse. I think the initial signage said 55 and older. If that that might not even change what you were saying, but there's houses there.
Well, I did notice that a couple of ones that have been built are not one level. It's two two floors. I'm going.
Yeah, I I think their marketing has changed a little bit.
But it is single family and um and and it started out, I mean, I may inquire again because it was, I don't know, maybe a month ago that we inquired and supposedly it was still going to be 55 and older because we had a son looking for a property. And he ended up having to buy in vineyard. And and spent $620,000. That was his 37th bid on, I don't know, with, you know, 20th home in the valley, just to find a place. And and they're just looking for, and he's been in Provo for years, but he wanted to move into a neighborhood where they can have kids now that he's starting to have kids and and have some neighbors and and have a community and not frankly, he's in a nearly wed, a newlywed, nearly dead ward. And we know how that is.
There's something to be said for the American dream. If there is some idea out there that a lot of Americans, it's something in their life. Neighborhoods that we find ourselves. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all the the time and perspective that each of you brings. And um hopefully you can find something that the community is comfortable with because sometimes it's a matter of placement. If you if you want to do something new, do it over there because I don't want it next to me. But West Provo is is it's an opportunity and a and a real challenge.
Thanks. Thank you. And I just want to share a couple of thoughts. I might be the only one that's shared concerns about kind of development pattern that's happened between uh State Street and the railroad tracks over there. Uh, like I said, the plan has been put into play big time. A couple of my key concerns, like I've mentioned before, continued residential development that may or may not be conducive to attracting some non-residential uses to the area. Um, potentially losing some sites that might support some non-residential uses to residential uses. And again, more of uh more of a particular type of housing that might um continue to add to the area's um homogeneous population. It's not to say that every type of housing in the neighborhood is the same, but I was pretty astonished, for example, at the um, number of children at the elementary school. number of children at the elementary school that are on the free or reduced lunch program and that sort of a thing. And, and I don't mean that to disparage, you know, housing that people that maybe are of a lesser income can afford. But I completely believe it's unhealthy to create neighborhoods where where underprivileged or populations that tend to go underserved are, are congregated and concentrated. Yeah, and I feel like that's part of what some of the types of housing that we've approved likely is going to result in over time. The, the example of David Gardner's project, I think, is a really good one to show that from a market perspective, the housing market is such that you could have some other types of housing in the neighborhood that the market would support and that people would move into. Admittedly, there is a challenge between a state road and railroad tracks, though. So, I, I do think there are limitations to that. And my last thought, I'll tell you, my crystal ball is not very clear and I'm not that smart, so in terms of what it might take in terms of tweaks to a plan to maybe attract a grocery store or something like that, the only way that I know of to maybe get some insight there is to sit down with the people that make those decisions and just say, hey, this is what we're looking at going forward, this is what we have, what, if anything, can be changed to make the area or a particular site more attractive? And in my experience, they love to talk about that stuff, they love to share, you know, their perspective and their insight and that type of a thing. And, and that's actually a relatively small crowd in the state to maybe get some feedback from, but I'd, I'd completely rely on whatever they said by way of maybe tweaks that could be made. For me, I think now that's probably the biggest deal for the west side of Provo, this part of Provo, just it's, it's pretty amazing to think about how far people have to go to get to basic things. And the housing market such that people are going to live wherever they can. So, there's no, there's no putting a finger in that, you know, leaking dike, but.
There's also no public transportation in this corridor that's really accessible, so we've got the people who could benefit from it the most.
Yeah. Yeah, all of that kind of thing, so, please, yes.
Mr. Harding suggested I tell you my side comment. I'm Becky Bogdan and I'm from Provo, and even though I'm from West Provo, my kids go to Franklin, and so I'm well aware of the dynamics here. Most of the kids south of the tracks and east of the freeway in central Provo, so it's Franklin South Neighborhood, are actually bused clear across town to Spring Creek Elementary School.
Really?
Yes, sir. We have such that high concentration of kids at risk that actually my neighborhood is bussed and I live clear by the parkway. We are bussed all the way up, half of Lakewood Neighborhood goes to Franklin Elementary, the other half goes to Sunset. There's a little piece of the boulders that actually goes to Sunset and fifty kids out of the boulders that go to Franklin. The rest of it, the trailer parks, the duplexes, the rest of the boulders, all of it, all the way over, is bussed all the way across town to Spring Creek. And Terry McCabe is a friend of mine and she's on the school board. And she's also, she, even though she lives in the Franklin Neighborhood, she grew up in Southeast Provo. She told me a lot of the kids that are there in Southeast Provo actually elect to go to Provost Elementary versus Spring Creek because there are so many issues there at that elementary school. And I know Shannon told me the other day, Shannon Hillsworth, eighty-five percent of that school is on free and reduced lunch. But, again,
It's not just.
Just so you know, Provost is sixty percent. So, it's still a high number for those that actually live in the neighborhood.
So is Franklin, so is Amelia Earhart, and so is Sunset. There you go.
Which kind of, kind of goes back to my concern about just Provo in general and the type of housing that's under construction now and
Me too.
and what's been approved. Unfortunately, there aren't as many communities in the valley that are receptive to providing housing for, you know, certain demographics as Provo's been. And I think Provo gets left dealing with the results of being the community in the valley that, that does provide for that. And as much as there's a need, I think communities can only support so much, so.
Yeah, but then, I mean, then you have, was it Mr. Hill's comment earlier? Like, go, go ahead and try and selling a more diverse housing mix into a neighborhood and, and two point seven, was this, like, there's absolutely not in favor of a spreading out that mix more.
Well, any neighborhood conversation about the development on the east side of this neighborhood that Mr. Connect talked about, nobody wanted that. But I cannot deny that it makes a great neighborhood to have the diverse mix. So it's one of those things where you, no one wants it. But once they have it and they have opportunities to get to know each other, it becomes great. But how do, we can't mandate that, no one's going to say, give that to me. And so it's really hard to pictorially and verbally represent that this is actually, you know, kind of like a parent telling their kid, I know what's best for you. But you gotta do it in such a way that it doesn't end up being a rundown mess ten years down the road. And I can't say that that isn't what's happening with the older stock. And so it's good that we're revisiting this because it is valid concern. But what else would go there?
There are a lot of points along that missing middle kind of continuum that aren't just town homes and, you know, getting into, you know, some kind of stacked flat. And it's not just Provo in Utah Valley that, that has that void. But I think maybe that's one place to start to maybe work to, to push for maybe diversity like what Commissioner Gonzalez just touched on.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious, so my street, we have fifteen homes on my street. They've sold in the last five years from two hundred and eighteen thousand to over a million dollars. We've got a thirty-year-old couple that just moved in right across the street from ninety-six-year-old Maxine, just had her birthday, ninety-six years old. And everything in between, we've got teenagers, we've got young kids, we've got toddlers, we've got college kids that have moved back in with their parents. We've got such a diverse mix in those fifteen houses. And I, I always laugh when people say that multifamily is high turnover. Three of us are left from when I moved in six years ago. Now, we've had high turnover in that neighborhood. But, I mean, we've got an eight thousand square foot house right across the street from a thirteen hundred square foot house. And the mix just on my little teeny street creates a diversity that everybody just, we love our street, we love our neighbors, everybody gets along. When, you know, the less economically fortunate or struggling, the neighbor right next door is right there to help. I mean, it just, and we've had homes torn down and rebuilt because there are nice homes, there are rundown homes. And it just creates that revitalization that I just feel if there was a way to package up that context and apply that everywhere to create that diversity, because you're right, I, I think because of the way things have gone, you know, I mean, a Patterson Construction buys forty acres and builds all the same home, we've gotten that into our mindset, but that's normal. That's not normal. I mean, and throughout history, that's never been normal, except for the last fifty years. So to create that diversity of big lots, small lots, expensive homes, cheaper homes, all mixed together does create the most vibrant, diverse communities where everybody feels like they have a place. Instead of getting lost in the monotony.
I'm a big believer, and maybe just back to, to try to put a fine point on my thought. This plan, as it's been implemented since its adoption, has contributed to less diversity.
Right, I agree.
So that, that might be the tweak that I'd be looking for.
Okay, I'm going to follow up with that and ask the hard question. Does that diversity go between the railroad tracks and State Street?
I think there's an opportunity for different housing products that we haven't seen. More, for example, of, there was a, you referred to it, and I can't remember the details, but town home, small lot, single family, I want to say it was near the park. More opportunity for that, maybe less of the stacked flat type of product. Particularly when it's a stacked flat that really has all the, when it's, when it's introduced as being an affordable housing product in a neighborhood that already has probably more affordable housing, you know, percentage-wise than most neighborhoods in the valley and that type of thing, so. That might be my thought on that.
No, I think that's a, I think that's a really, really important question that we have to ask, because if you look at the current zoning map, there is a, a mix, unfortunately, it just, if you look at the zoning, it's mixed from what the original intent of the future land use map was. But that mix of zoning has created mostly homogeneous housing type. Does that make sense? Okay.
In our designation, really, the market goes in one direction.
Right.
With that, so with, as I said, designation.
Okay. So, just to wrap up, because it's really late. Where do you want me to go from here?
Talk to commercial people is my thought, seriously.
Okay.
I think that's, like, in terms of having a positive impact on the neighborhood, making changes that are reflective of advice that they give would be a high priority for me.
Okay.
To speak my thought.
I think that's a great thought and that's.
Yeah, stuff like that.
Yeah.
And what type, that's the thing that I think is really easy to lose track of.
Yeah.
Retailers, grocers, rooftops are not all the same, not at all.
Right.
A housing type with, you know, a young married couple is viewed very differently than an established household, young kids, where they're buying everything for the first time. Different things like that, more discretionary income. That is prized in growing areas that are changing in that direction. That's where retailers want to make investment.
Yeah, I think it's really hard. You, you know, when you see the median household income for Utah County is about sixty-eight thousand dollars. Then you see the median household income for Provo hovering around fifty-two. And, and that, you know, has some incredible implications for the type of development that we receive.
I think just very unscientifically, I know, I've seen this several times over the years. Grocery stores, about ten thousand people for your standard full-size grocery store. Corner stores like a, a seven eleven is about a thousand people. Just as a a metric, it seems like, I mean, are there ten thousand people in south, what, east Provo?
That'd be a good, that'd be a fun number to see. Yeah.
Yeah.
I actually did a science project with my son, and I think there's seven to eight thousand in the Provost, Provost South and Spring Creek neighborhoods prior to all these projects being approved.
By pushing ten.
And there's enough water coming out of the spring at Bicentennial Park to give all of them two gallons of water a day, just in case you want to know how that worked out.
I've been wondering.
Maybe not next year. Okay, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Do we need a motion to adjourn or are we still adjourned already?
Is that a motion? It was, I think, and a second, any objection? Hey, thanks, everybody.
I appreciate it.
Return.
The recording has stopped.